Dan, you all set because you're up first, brother? All right. Oh, that's true. I got it right here. I'm not having a moment of silence. She would not have wanted that. I'm having a round of applause. Think about it. There's that silly. She'll hear us. You guys all ready? All right. Let's get the show on the road. Here we go. Call to order. 2018 Wakefield Town Meeting. First thing we're going to do is Betsy Sheeran, our town clerk, will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
This is probably not... No. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. The next thing is the return of the warrant. I Constable Kevin Loeb's hereby certified that I've posted annual town meeting warrant of April 30th, 2018. On April 12th, 2018, received by Betsy Sheeran. I just want to read some of the out-of-towners for the... Put them on the record. Sherry Dalton, Executive Assistant Town Administrator. Kathy Cheek, Retirement. Janet Slamenda, Architect. Chief Smith. Bruce Lyons. Bob Holmes. Dennis Gorman. Maria Monksorano. Paul Reviss. Ruth Clay. Lynn O'Neil. Dan Schneider. Mark Sardella. Dan McGrath. Claire Moss. Todd Bowden. Mike Pfefferling. Ryan Pesatore. Joe Malerk. And Charlene Malerk. Before we begin, we are missing a vibrant member of town meeting, Phyllis Hull. And you know, I thought we'd have a moment of silence, but I don't know. When it comes to Phyllis, there was nothing silent about her. So you know what I think we'll do? We'll break with tradition and we'll have a little round of applause and hope she hears us to Phyllis Hull. I think she'd like that a lot more than a round of... Than a moment of silence, that's for sure. Thank you. There was nothing silent about her, I'll tell you. All right. What do we got here? Oh, before we kick off the festivities, we have a little preview. Dan Sherman from FinCom has his less-than-ten-minute review of the financial picture. Chief Smith, did you hear what I said? Less than ten minutes. Okay, Dan, you're on your own. Take it away. Ten minutes.
I don't even know where the on/off button is. There we go. Thank you. As I've done years past, give you a little financial background before we start spending $93 million. Talk a little bit about where it's coming from and where it's going. So this first graph just shows our receipts. Tax levy is number one that we receive. It's the bottom of the bar graphs. That is our steadiest, our most consistent income, and the most important, I think, in terms of keeping our budget process sane. On top of that is estate aid, which is... Has the highest fluctuation, followed by local receipts and other income. But you can see how we've increased over the years to the point where up to roughly $85 million in receipts in 2017. Over that 28-year period, $3.75 per year. Most recently, it's 4.4% per year, and largely because of the new growth, the additional work that's been going on up on the power company and at the head of the lake. Our receipts, as I mentioned, is dominated by the tax levy, and now it's roughly about 75% of our total. Good spot to be in because the state aid has a tendency to go down, and there's a graph to show that, but you can see it's not doing as well in terms of a percentage of our total. Local receipts is up from roughly 7% or 8% up to around 10%, largely because of the hotel and meals tax. It's been a real boost to the town. Local receipts, most of this is dominated by motor vehicles. You can see a large drop in fiscal year nine and fiscal year 10, which hurt us for those who remember the budget crisis that we had back then. Our local receipts was way down, probably $1 million less than what it had been two years earlier. Also, the... I mentioned the meals and hotel tax. That's up there. It's one of the things that really has pushed us up and helped. State aid is an item that Steve loves to rail upon, the fact that the state has not been holding up its part of the arrangement. Just back in 2002, we were getting almost $11 million from the state, and then it dropped and dropped and dropped to now 2012 at $8 million. Now it's slowly creeping back up again, but for what we expect coming forward, it's pretty much flat. Our stabilization fund, this is our reserve, so these... This is monies that we have that we can tap for, say, for example, emergencies or other spend that we need or want to spend money on. It used to be up over $5 million. We spent a lot of that money. It takes a two-thirds vote to take money out of the stabilization fund. We've now creeped it up to the point that it's at roughly $3 million, and it represents about 3% of our budget. Finance Committee and the Selectmen and Steve Mayo all have a policy, the same policy that we want to maintain roughly a 10% level in reserves. This is one component, and it's roughly at 3%. The second component is our free cash. This is our checking account. This is the money that we have available in our account that we can spend as we decide in town meeting. And as of each July 1st, you can see we had a very low free cash for a number of years. Most recently, we got it up to a level that where it needs to be, at roughly 10% of the total spend that we have, and roughly $10 million as of July 1. However, in the fall town meeting last November, we spent about $2.4 million of our free cash on some articles for this current fiscal year. So our total free cash today is just over $7 million. We have a debt service fund. This fund is used to fund our projects. For example, this building. This building is paid out of our debt service fund. We have the Dolberg, the Woodville, we have Firetruck, we had the Recreation Bond. There's a whole host of things that are in our debt service fund. And we put money into this fund. It use... We use it to pay the bonds for the various buildings and equipment and other borrowings that we do. Our capital spend, this is something that has been really poor for a number of years. You can see back in 2006, 2007, we were barely at a half a million dollars of what we spent on capital. And it hurt. A lot of our buildings, our equipment, our trucks, vehicles were in poor shape because we... And our IT were very poor short shape because we just didn't spend what we needed to. That has now been creeped up. So the two lines at the bottom, our capital spend is up at $2 million. This year, we're going to be asking for $2 million again. As a percentage of pay, it's roughly... A percentage of our total budget's about 2%. If I rolled into capital items from the debt service, now we're up to around $7... Or $5 million, or about 5% of our budget is now being spent when you combine our $2 million that we do on capital plus what we spend on our municipal bonds that we've issued. So these values are get up close to where we really want to be. Large budgets, I look at healthcare as being the biggest of the large budgets, and there we made significant changes. We went to the GIC. We lowered that live... That cost by about a net $2 million, but when the... We also did $1.8 million into an OPEB trust fund. This year, we're going to be asking for $1.6 million to go into that OPEB trust fund. That was a big help. Retirement and Northeast Volk, you can see, have been steady increases, but north of 4%. So the budgets in the past, from fiscal year 13 through fiscal year 18, you can see for the schools, it's been an increase of roughly 6.4% over the last five years. We have put a lot of effort... Some of you remember, a couple of years ago, we increased the school budget by 11%. Last year is about 5%. And what we're going to be asking for this coming year, this... For fiscal year 19 is going to be about 5.5%. We put all extra money into fire, library, police, DPW. General Government has been holding the line. Thank you, Steve. And the total's been increasing though over the last five years at roughly 5.8%. For fiscal year 19, looking forward, our reserves are at acceptable level. We're running at 10% of our budget. We've enhanced many services over the last few years, and some of you notice it. For example, the school, the library is now open on Sundays. We've added resource officers. There's a number of things we've been able to do, and some of it is just getting back to what we used to do before the 2008 financial crisis. That said, though, we still have $59 million of projects that have been put on the table for consideration over the next five years. $59 million is a big nut, and we're only spending $2 million a year right now, so we have some issues there. I mentioned hotels and meals tax. We have too much snow and ice this year, so we're going to have an overdraft of $600,000. And we also have an article, I believe it's six, to talk about the Public Safety Building. Our outstanding debt is at $45 million, and that, again, that comes from the debt service fund. You can see a list of projects that are there. We have retirement unfunded liability of roughly $63 million as of a year ago. We have an OPEB unfunded liability of $79 million. And we just received a report and an update on that number, and I think it's now $64 million, right, Kevin? Where's Kevin? I think it's... I think it's $64 million, so actually some good news on that front. So we have roughly, call it, $190 million liabilities that we have to deal with over the coming years. Terms of revenues, we're going to have... We expect an increase of $2.7 million to roughly 4% from our tax levy, the property taxes. The state aid is basically a net change of maybe a reduction of $73,000. We'll see what the final number is. I'm expecting local receipts at roughly $8 million. I expect we'll have to use $1.45 million of free cash. The light department receives... Gives us $891,000 this coming year. We're going to pull $233,000 from available funds. We receive $928,000 from the SBA for this building. We also have the debt exclusion for this building at $2.4 million. So our total revenues are expected for fiscal year 19 at $95 million. For expenses, as we go through the booklet, you'll see these numbers for general government through benefits, and that's going to add up to roughly $82.4 million. Our articles, $2 million for capital, $5.6 million goes in for paying off our mortgages. Trash collections, $1.8. Roads and sidewalks, .6. Radios for the DPW overlay account is .6. And state and county assessments, 1.3 for total 12.8. So our total levy increase is at 7... $2.7 million. Increases to salaries, retirement, healthcare, capital, Medicare, and vocational schools are listed there. Those are the significant increases. We actually getting a little break from the state and the county at $90,000, and our articles add up to $44,000 or less than they did the previous year. Total department budgets are going up 4.1 million or 5.3%. So in total, $90 million being spent for fiscal year 18 is going to go to $95 million for 19, 4.45 million dollar increase. Our revenue is expected to be at 93.7, and therefore, to balance the budget, we're grabbing 1.4 million out of our $7.2 million of free cash. We still have challenges ahead of us. Building and field maintenance, poor maintenance of roads and sidewalks, stormwater, the high school, obviously something we need to deal with. And again, $56 million of other capital projects that we still have been working on, thinking about, and pushing off from one year to the next. But we also have opportunities. And the opportunities is the power line is coming through. I've estimated $1.5 million is coming to us and probably starting at fiscal year 20 as an increase in our tax levy. Last Dolberg bond is paid off at $51,000 at fiscal year 20, so in '21, that is now some quote "free" money. Woodville bond at $565,000 comes off in '22, $99,000 for Senior Center in '22, and $591 in '23 for the Public Safety Building from 15 years ago. Total reduction's about $1.3 million, so that will help us deal with other spend. So with that, thank you very much for your attention.
Mr. Mayo. Article 1, to determine how much money the town will raise and appropriate for general government, protection of persons and property, human services, public works, public service enterprises, education, unclassified, benefits and administration, and light department, specifying what amount... What appropriation shall be taken from the receipts of a department, or to see what the town will do about it. Mr. Mayo.
That the town vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy or transfer from available funds, the sums of money as detailed in the following recommendations for the fiscal year, July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019, the grand total amounting to $95,782,71.
Is there a...
Sorry. The motions will provide for the breakdown of this amount and the sources thereof and the various classifications as described in the recommendation book.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Over the past 10 years, I've opened town meeting with a review of how far we have come as a community. While I still think it important to reflect on what we have learned, and in fact, many instances achieved, and to paraphrase Florida Georgia Line, although we see it clearer in the rearview mirror than we ever did looking over the hood, together, the town council... You like that one? That's pretty good, right? The town council...
Every year.
Finance Committee and this body have done a pretty good job, but we need to be ready for the next steps that we will plan and implement together as a community. I certainly agree with Dan Sherman's forward in the recommendation book that although we are positioned well to undertake the strategic enhancement, this warrant includes, we need to proceed carefully to keep it that way. In the interim, we continue to attempt to achieve the best balance between the utilization of tax revenue and the retention of prudent levels of reserves to not only provide the essential services that our citizens deserve, but also to protect our ability to weather the external pressures from the state and federal government. We can't always control our inbox. On the services end, I remain truly amazed at the quality of work and passion by which our employees tackle the myriad of public issues and needs they face every day. In a State of the Union address in 1961, President John F. Kennedy commented on the importance of public service and how the success of our nation, the success of our town, depends on those involved in career service. We are all dependent upon our town employees' sense of loyalty, responsibility, competence, and energy. I and the town council are grateful for all the public employees, and we certainly appreciate their efforts and the public support. I also wish to thank the town council, the boards, and committees for putting Wakefield first. Whether we completely agree or not, I firmly believe that in all hearts, it's all about the W. Tonight, this budget includes a greater commitment to communication, as the town council has prioritized communication with the public. Look for a crisper and enhanced website and social media postings. This budget also includes increased service and coverage in the building department. We also move what are really maintenance functions from the capital article to the DPW budget. The school department continues its march towards excellence. A strong educational system keeps our children, and tax dollars in Wakefield, attracts new families, promotes new tax growth, and provides a better community for all of us to enjoy. Tonight, we'll ask for $2 million in capital improvement spending. We will also request funding to allow better radio communications among our DPW. We have been able to steadily increase our capital spending each year. However, it is important to note that we receive over 8 million capital spending requests annually, so no one gets all that they want. I wish to thank Sharma Jerrison and the rest of the capital planning committee for their dedication to the careful spending of these dollars. Despite these expenditures, I still anticipate our reserve position to remain within our policy of 10% of operating budgets. We will also continue to fund OPEB. All in all, we'll hold approximately $23 million in reserves and required deposits for future obligations. Probably a big factor in our receiving a AAA bond rating from Standard &amp; Poor's, the highest rating available and enjoyed by only a handful of communities. This bond rating led to the savings of hundreds of thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars in the Galvin School and on other borrowings, and will continue on the borrowing for the Public Safety Building today. And speaking of those bonds, Article 3 tonight will fund the annual payments due on our bonds. Some really good news here, as Mr. Sherman mentioned, we will actually be paying off bonds in the Dolberg, Woodville, Senior Center, and Public Safety Building within the next two to three years. And this will free up about $1.5 million a year of bond payments, which we are now paying within Proposition 2.5 for future projects. This prudent planning helps us in the payment for our improved Public Safety Building that we will again discuss in Article 8. I think we all agree that providing top-shelf public safety to our citizens, residents, and guests is our number-one priority. We also need to tackle the economic challenges ahead, especially in the revitalization of Main Street and our business districts. The recent zoning changes designed to allow housing over retail have led to a number of developments on Main, Water, and North Ave. We continue to develop the best way to market the experience of Wakefield and achieve economic growth. Look for more branding and messaging here. We need to tell our story. That plan and acting steps will be discussed in the months to come. Also, Article 11 will provide what the town council feels is a positive method to help our valued seniors remain in their homes. They are the bedrock upon which this great community is built, and they deserve our assistance when necessary. I see our best days ahead, but it will take a lot of hard work by all. Again, I wish to thank my department heads, particularly Kevin Gill, our Town accountant, John McCarthy, our treasurer, my administrative assistant, Sherry Dalton, the Finance Committee, and especially the town council for all their hard work, support, and dedication. So with that being said, Mr. Moderator, I will move on the general government portion of the budget. That the town raise and appropriate the sum of $2,368,953 for general government, and to provide therefore that the sum of $3,000 be appropriated by transfer from the Wetlands Protection Act filing fees account to the Conservation Commission Personal Services account, and the sum of $2,365,953 be raised and appropriated from tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Second.
Thank you. The general government portion of the town budget provides for the majority of the administrative departments of the town. The total amount recommended for general government is $2,368,953, an increase of $21,792 or less than 1% from last fiscal year. Although happy to answer any questions, I will focus on areas of substantive changes. The Selectmen budget, although... I knew I was going to make that mistake. The town council's budget, although it does say Selectmen in there, although reduced by $4,000, contains a greater commitment to communicating with the citizens. The budget has been restructured to allow for more attention to our electronic profile. Website and media programs for the coming year include major website system upgrade this summer, including auditing and updating of all town department and committee pages, as well as updates accommodating mobile display devices and access. Create, support, publish, and distribute town department news and information on website and social media for Selectmen and town administrator initiatives, town clerk, public works, DPW, health department, senior center, recreation department, dog park issues, animal control, Lake Corner Power, among others. Maintain three-click guideline to find most information. 24/7 emergency and public safety notification for weather and roadway information, for instance, snow parking bans, water main breaks, et cetera. Major e-code system update for town charter, town bylaws, and zoning regulations. Town administrator transparency, economic development, and major projects dashboard, including coordinating meeting minutes, video presentations, and project documents in one central location. Online forums support for public records requests. Support citizen issues reporting via the C Click Fix system. Ask town administrator on the website. Social media monitoring, et cetera. Maintain Wakefield 101 for new residence welcoming program. Transparency support, and I hope that you all have tried the visual budget tool on the website. That's a pretty exciting way to see exactly where your tax dollars are going. Business and community event support and experience Wakefield, Wakefield Minute videos. You can see videos regarding some of our local businesses. Support new and existing businesses with online business welcome center with Town Planner. Public schedules, dine-in Wakefield guides and local eats promotions. Support and programming for downtown Albion's Art Corridor and Albion Culture Exchange, first Thursdays at the Arts Center. Integrate online forums for health and building, and work with the unit pay system. And establish guidelines to post meeting minutes in a timely way for critical groups like the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. Onto the IT budget. The IT budget is actually decreased by $37,637. Over the past few years, we have realigned the mix of staff and contract consultants to better and more efficiently serve the municipal and school departments. I am happy to report that both the town and school are on the same page as far as IT is concerned. It is certainly clear that in order to provide better services to taxpayers, this department needs to be staffed to an appropriate level. The department headed by Todd Bowden has done a great job with a streamlined staff. We are currently being wooed by our neighboring communities for assistance in their IT departments, and it actually is quite an honor having others contact us to see what we can do to help them. Accounting, treasurers, legal, tax collectors, assessors, town clerks, election registration, conservation, Finance Committee, and Planning Board offices are all essentially level-funded with the exception of contractual and negotiated items. The Board of Appeals is slightly increased to cover the increased cost of hearings. Article 20 will address that same need on the revenue side. The election expense budget is increased due to the fact that there are three elections in 2019, in fiscal year 2019, as opposed to one in fiscal year 2018. The recommendation for the general government portion of Article 1 is $2,368,933, $53, with $3,000 from available funds, and $2,365,953 from the tax levy as stated in the recommendation book, and this budget is unanimously supported by the town council.
The Finance Committee reviewed all of these budgets, and one of them, though, was... Let's put it this way, the Finance Committee feels that the new position of a social media specialist should not be added. That proposed position has an $85,000 salary, with the possibility of the town of Linfield covering $30,000 of that cost. The committee feels that the money should... Would be better spent on roads and sidewalks. However, when the Finance Committee voted three weeks ago, due to an oversight on our part, if you look in your recommendation book on page 6 on the Selectmen's department there at the top, you'll see that there's a difference of $85,000 in the personal services. That figure of $306,000 needs to be changed, and the Finance Committee this evening voted to change it to a recommendation of $336,000, a $55,000 reduction rather than $85,000. That's the only proposal. Therefore, the Finance Committee moves to amend the Board of Selectmen budget by reducing the personal services portion of the Board of Selectmen's budget to $336,338, and the total Selectmen's budget to $380,594, for a total of $2,313,953 for general government, and $2,310,953 from tax levy, and $3,000 from available funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sherman, do you have that in writing?
It's been reviewed by council.
Yeah, I understand. With us tonight, Mr. Mullins not here. I just... I'll need it to read. Mr. Mullins not here with us tonight. We have Attorney Yale McGinn, who has been sworn in and knows her stuff, so don't mess around. Okay. All right. So I'm going to hold this to read, okay? Do you need it? Do you need it?
Nope.
Any discussion on the motion to amend, the general budget motion?
Need a second.
We got a second. We already had a second. Yeah, Paul, you want to speak on this?
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Good evening. Paul Donarco, 17 Wiley Street. Chairperson of Town Council. In regards to the motion that is before you tonight, let me address something that a lot of you may not know. Most of the Selectmen annually go to the Massachusetts Municipal Association's annual meeting, and there we learn many opportunities that are shared between the 351 communities in the state of Massachusetts. One of the most dominant issues that they've discussed in the last five years has been social media and how to reach your public. And you are our public. So four years ago, during one of Mr. Mayo's reviews with me for his salary increase, that was one of my biggest points for him to try to change in the town hall. How do we... How do we increase or make our website better? We've been working diligently now, over the last several years, to do so. I cannot support the recommendation by the FinCom in this matter. The money has been vetted through our budget process on our own board when Mr. Mayo presented it to us. There was a reduction of one position to make up the difference of the amount being sought, and if we are sharing it with Linfield, that'd be even less for us. So the amount is minute in comparison with the many budgets that you are going to hear tonight, and to reduce it by this amount is, in my opinion, not to benefit the town, but to put it into a detrimental position where we need to be able to reach out to each and every one of you in a fashion that's beneficial to all of us. And I don't think that's going to happen by elimination of this job. So please, I recommend that you say no to this and let us move on to the main body.
And Santos.
Anne McGonigal-Santos, Thirty-Nine Converse Street. While I appreciate and wholeheartedly respect the careful examination of the budget by FinCom, I do disagree with Mr. Sherman's dropping of the $55,000. The website and social media position is something that people, citizens, have come to us and have really wanted us to beef up, the website and what it can do so that we can put out information in a timely manner, we can be transparent about what we put out. I think technology is increasing exponentially, and for us to not address that would put Wakefield a little bit behind other communities, and I don't want to see that happen. I want to see us increase our ability to do online forms. I think it would be great for people from within Wakefield, but also without, to be able to go onto the website and see what great things we have happening in the downtown, what restaurants we have. I also think this position can make sure to maintain the ADA compliance under disabilities, to make sure that the information we're putting out to the public is supported under the ADA. So for many reasons that Mr. Mayo talked about, I think that we can't, I'm not comfortable with us taking a step back on technology for us to put our information out onto the public.
In the south. Oh, you want to go in the middle. Oh, there's one. Okay.
Brown and Delavolby, Eight Cyrus Street. I have to agree with the two previous speakers. Having studied what real, true transparency is, particularly town government transparency, the two previous speakers are correct. The information does not only have to be available to people, it has to be easily accessible and beyond that, easy to understand, and not only that, it has to be engaging. It has to make people want to understand it and read it. And I think the social media has really taken off quite a bit. And to cut this, by how much, may I ask?
I think it told fifty-five, Dan, fifty-five thousand? Fifty-five thousand.
How much was the, I thought I heard eighty-five thousand for position?
Eighty-five, but Linfield, the possibility of Linfield would be covering thirty thousand, so that leaves fifty-five for us.
Fifty-five thousand, and it was supposed to be allocated to the roads?
Well, you don't, that was just what he felt it could be better used. He's not, you can't designate where it would go.
Okay, so it wouldn't necessarily go to roads?
Be better spent, was I believe what he said.
Better spent, okay. I really, really want to emphasize to everyone how social media sounds kind of like fluff, but it is not. Tremendous discussion happens on social media, as many of you know. People can ask questions and get more information and discuss things before they come to a floor like this or before they place votes. So I really encourage everyone to vote this down because of this very, very particular piece that will move Wakefield forward in so many ways beyond that we can see on this floor tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Deb Butler, Two Twenty Main Street. I am also for a social media position. Can you tell us if that position is going to be, Paul Donaco mentioned the word "job", will that be put out as a job opportunity, or is it going to be sourced internally?
Steve.
It is a new position. I do, to be honest, have someone in mind for it.
Okay, so it's not something that's going to be posted for people in the community to bid for or apply for?
Probably not, to be honest.
Is, okay, so you have someone in mind that you've already identified?
Yes.
Okay.
Next.
Rebecca Gilding, Twelve Hickory Hill Road. I'm also in favor of the Town Council's recommendation. I think as someone who is newer to the town, six years in June, but many of you have been here much longer, where I looked for, when I moved here for information, was the website. As a mother of two small children, I'm constantly on the go. My phone is my resource. Our website is severely lacking. It's how people get information, I think as evidenced by our election last week, where less than 20% of registered voters showed up for municipal election, and by looking around here, far fewer than that are here at town meeting. I think using social media and our website to provide information to more of the town, which is where increasingly more people are going to be, is online, is a good spend for the town. Thank you.
In the south.
Brooke, Thirty-Two Cedar Street. You know, I'm pretty new here. I'm also pretty young. I use technology a lot, and I think the website definitely needs to be updated, but when I think about a town government, social media doesn't really come into play. You know, I'm on social media to communicate with my friends and businesses and that kind of stuff. I fully support improving technology, making the website easier to find things, but I think social media specifically isn't really something that we need, so I have to agree with the Finance Committee on this one.
In the south.
Christopher Bossy, Eighty-Nine Outlook Road. So I'm actually, this is my first town meeting, actually. I'm still senior in high school, and so there are just a couple of points I'd like to make that I think are applicable here. The first one is that social media, I mean, all the stereotypes about people in my generation using it so much more than older people, you know, blah, blah, blah. But I think really, nobody in my generation, or even people who are slightly older, are going to think, oh, I'm going to look up Wakefield in a phone book and see what business opportunities are here. They're looking online. And so I think that it's, the future of communication is, although not entirely online, it is increasingly online, and so I would have to agree with the Town Council's recommendation on those grounds. And then another is, I'm going off to college in a few months. I've had to think a lot about investments, where my money will be best spent, but most bang for my buck. This is $55,000. It is an investment, and if we put it towards this social media position, I think we, there is a good chance we can expect a return of more than $55,000 if we draw more than $55,000 worth of business and taxes and fees and whatnot. And so I would also have to agree with the Town Council's recommendation to vote down this measure on those grounds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gerard Lehman, Ten Fox Road. It was my motion at FinCom, so I'm trying to take some heat off my chairman here. This is my bad idea, so I want you guys all to kind of understand the context of why I proposed it, why I fought for it to some degree at FinCom. At the meeting, our chairman at the prior meeting actually had said, hey, it sounds like you guys aren't all that happy with some of Steve's cuts. Why don't you think about some offsets? The good things that Dan described in our financial history come from muscle memory. And what I was concerned about, having been a supporter of what you'll hear under the road budget, wanting to get that back up to a better level, was we should, at least as a Finance Committee, have the temerity, the guts to find an offset before we rely on free cash. So everyone has spoken in very much generalities about websites and social media. Nobody mentioned the actual cost. So in typical Finance Committee form, I did some diligence. Glassdoor.com has a number of about $45,000 for salary. PayScale has about $29,000. So if you remember, the $85,000 start number for a social media coordinator, that's, you know, double what I found on some rudimentary website search. All for it, I just, you know, all for it in general and increasing this level of service to the town, but giving a proportional decline in road funding where I thought we needed that, I made the motion thinking, you know, at this last town meeting, there were people who were pretty vociferous about saying our roads aren't in good condition either, as, you know, as bad as our website, no doubt about it. So I think this town meeting should feel pretty good, that you had two town councils and boards really deliberating amongst themselves, doing some diligence. I didn't want that to be lost. So as you're deliberating this, please do keep in mind, you know, it's not about not thinking that we don't need websites, it's where is your tax dollar best spent? In my humble opinion, I brought it to my colleague, saying it's really about the marginal benefit. What do we need more at this point? And before we go to free cash, and we do have a lot of it, and this isn't the end of the world, my colleague Rebecca made compelling points both at today's meeting and beforehand, saying how much we need to improve it, absolutely true. But, you know, a couple Sundays ago, on a soccer Sunday, the Nahand Street water main broke, and if we didn't cancel soccer because of rain that day, we would have really had a real headache. So this is, though it's a larger point, and I don't want to speak about other budgets that aren't properly before us yet, what I'm hoping you all will take into mind as we deliberate all these things, is the beauty of maintenance has to be kept in mind. And as we're looking at the next shiny new thing, which is a good service, social media whatnot, websites whatnot, the boring blocking and tackling has to be taken care of. And there's equity issues in that, I hope you realize that. The cost of $85,000 for social media struck me as absurd. I've been doing corporate communications, supporting corporate communications for 20 years. We pay our, the person we pay to do that is like point one of their FTE, so there's too much money. I think it's better spent elsewhere, though as an initiative, it obviously has some value. So I hope, I spoke characteristically, long-windedly, but I hope that gives you a bit of context of what I was thinking and making the motion. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for your comment.
You're welcome. How was your trip in the west?
Hi, Bob Mitchell, Six Balding Street. This did get a little confusing because I'm very much into funding the road issue, but briefly on the social media, I've got 30 years in the IT business, and although it's something that a lot of corporations are involved in, I think it's starting to soften up a little bit because there can be adverse impacts to any group, government or corporation, starting to dabble in social media. I mean, it's really not, I guess from a libertarian perspective, I'm not, I'm a little hesitant about town government in this instance getting into social media. I know what happened to the, some of the Facebook or local accounts in Wakefield, and they got very ugly. So personally, I'd just rather see the government step aside from that. The roads is what really interests me, and I understand initially, if I can paraphrase it, Rick Stinson asked for $500,000 for roads, and Steve, the male, sorry, cut it down to 250, which is a huge cut. Usually don't see that in DPW or, and certainly respond to that if that's incorrect. So for me, roads, I commute to New Hampshire in either my car, my motorcycle, or occasionally my bicycle, and the roads in Wakefield are the worst on all the surrounding communities except for probably Woburn. I ride with a lot of active cyclists. I know Steve also blew out a tire last week according to the YouTube thing. So I think we just neglected roads. I don't want to spend a fortune on roads, but I think it's just fundamental good maintenance. So I would support this article. I'm a little disappointed that this social media thing got blended into it, but I would definitely support more funding.
The motion's about social media, that's what it's about.
I thought, okay, well, wouldn't this open up funding for the road?
It would open up funding for anything, but it's not designated under this motion for roads. Just want to be careful about that.
Yeah, it's, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
In the west. He's next, and then you, Joe. Mr. Lieber. What?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Just to be correct, it's 350, not 250. There you go. But we don't care about roads right now. Mr. Lieber.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Daniel Lieber, One Elm Street. Some questions that I have as I've been listening to the presentation. The $30,000 that has been effectively allocated towards this position, if in fact this motion is accepted and moves forward, would that be sufficient for the town administrator to actually do any of the initiatives that are intended for this?
Mr. Sherman.
No, that's, you're off. The Finance Committee's motion is to eliminate the position of the special media consultant. The consultant or the person hired has a salary of $85,000, which would be covered, $30,000 of it, which would be covered by the, expected by the town of Linfield. So our motion is just eliminate the position, and the net savings is of $55,000. So our motion is to reduce the Selectman's budget by $55,000.
Okay, so we don't have to allocate $85,000 for this position. We only actually are allocating $55,000 for this position.
Correct.
That's, that is the town council's position. Our position is to save the $55,000 for other uses, for example, roads.
Thank you. So the $55,000, if it's spent, it's being broadcast as for social media, but my understanding from the presentation that was given is that it's covering actually much more than just social media. It's not covering just Facebook, but it's covering many other aspects, as I understand in your presentation. Please correct me if I'm wrong. There's communication.
Just a minute, just a minute. Keep going, Mr. Lieber. Mr. Mayo's getting up willy-nilly.
And I know I'm going to miss some things here, but my understanding is that it covers certainly posting things to Facebook, and we've seen some of these things already because I believe that this position has been, currently being done to some degree. So there's, as different things are posted, we see it on Facebook, we see it on Twitter, we see it on certainly social media, but we also are seeing things on the website and website advances and things get updated very regularly, as well as I believe there's marketing and Albion Cultural Exchange that's also a part of this. Am I missing other components? It's really more of a marketing position than it is social media.
Now, let me try and help you out. Mr. Mayo, can you clarify what this position entails?
Yes. This, unfortunately, my fault in labeling it just as social media. A lot of it is website upgrade, website enhancement, really a major upgrade of the website. One thing is that we want our website to be a responsive website, so it'll be on your phone, respond to your phone directly as it would on your laptop. So you know, if you go out there, sometimes on your phone, it doesn't fit. We want to make sure that that happens directly without you having to hit anything. So there's that, there's making sure all the information is correct from the different departments on there, so it is more than just social media issue, so.
And does this, does this position also impact any other activities beyond the direct digital realm of the town?
It does, it will assist in policy regarding dealing with social media, messaging and things like that. I guess that's an extension of that.
So what I'm hearing is that there's actually a lot of expertise that will be required for this position, which is different than other traditional social media consultants and other, and other technology areas. Having been in the technology field for over 30 years, the value for $55,000 is actually extremely good that we will be getting for this position, and I recommend voting no on the amendment that's being proposed, while I have deep respect for the FinCom, and they do a wonderful job of trying to steward us to make sure our expenditures are prudent. This is a prudent expenditure, so I recommend voting with the Town Council and voting no on the amendment and yes on the main motion.
I'll explain how that voting goes. If we don't vote on the amendment, Joe, you're next. Thank you.
Joseph Bertrand, Seven Someway Circle, and also a member of the Finance Committee. It really came to the point when we had, by a majority vote of the Finance Committee, it was felt that the elimination of this particular position would be better used in our economics for the purposes of, say, better road conditions because of the condition of our roads that are in. Therefore, that is the reason why this was cut from that purely an expenditure and accounting issue, and also due to the fact, and I won't even get into it, the poor condition of our roads. But I suggest that we have favorable action on the amendment. Thank you.
Okay. In the south. In the South.
Christine DeFleece, Thirty-three Lawrence Street. Is this position, the person gonna be a town employee and pay into the pension and get health benefits and stuff?
Yes.
So what would the actual cost be, because it's not gonna be the fifty-five thousand?
It does depend upon what health insurance they take, so.
So is this something you see staying in the town forever? Or is it gonna be, they're gonna come and fix things and then after that?
I think that we will constantly, constantly be improving our technology. So yeah, this is the wave of the future, so yeah, I do see this position in the town forever.
Okay, well, then I guess another question, and it might be to the lawyer too, is how can you, on a position that hasn't even been voted on yet, not publicize legally, how can you not put this out to anybody in the town or the state who may want this job? I thought you had to post jobs.
Steve knows this, yeah.
I mean, I, I can certainly post it. I said that I had someone in mind for it, but I can certainly post it.
So it will be posted where, in the Town Hall, the Globe?
We don't put anything in the Globe anymore. It's way too expensive, but we do put it on the website and the Town Hall.
And who, who does the website stuff now that you feel isn't sufficient?
Website needs a major upgrade. We upgraded it two years ago, three years ago. We're at the next point to continue to do that. I've been doing that on a contract basis.
So why not just continue on a contract basis instead of having another town employee on the payroll?
Well, because I think, believe it or not, I would like to have, make sure that we have more control over this. And it actually would be a savings to us, at least from the salary side, to do it that way.
Okay, I urge everybody to go to the FinCom and not vote for this position because the word roads keeps coming up every other minute. I mean, most of the roads in this town, and I'm on Lawrence Street, looks like a war zone.
No roads, because they can't.
Does that have to be a separate?
Yeah, that's got, right. It just goes back into the budget. Okay, no roads. Right here in the North, right, okay.
Hi, Rochelle Rubino, Forty Lotus Ave. My question was kind of similar to what was just asked, but I just want to see clarification. If this is approved, it will be posted externally?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? In the South.
Hi, good evening, Catherine Blackwell, Thirty-two Wakefield Ave. And these, these two past ladies have touched on my thought. Is it as simple as each town kicks in the thirty-three thousand and, and then you post the position? Because there's an applicant who's very eager.
I can't hear you, you gotta speak up.
Could you, each town throw in the thirty-three thousand, I think? Is that the, one town was gonna offset the cost by how much?
Thirty thousand.
So could each town throw in thirty thousand and then post the job at, at a competitive rate?
Linfield is going to put in thirty thousand, we put in fifty-five thousand. Do you know how those figures came about, Steve?
It's not as simple as that. We'd have to enter into an intermunicipal agreement with another community, like we do with other jobs, with other things that we share. In this case, this person would be a Wakefield employee, so Linfield would supplement us, and we would pay them, and it would be, it would work that way. Like we do in other, in other shared arrangements. But it's not just quite as simple as that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oscar Cortez, Farview Drive. I also work on the IT field, and I have a couple of questions. Actually, part of my job is to manage building mobile apps and building websites. And I see social media as one skill, right, for one person, maybe like someone else said, marketing. And web development is a different skill, right? And it's also cross-functional, meaning you need a designer, you need to do research, you need people who are looking at the copy, right, that's gonna be on the site, and you need a developer, right? So my question is, if we are hiring just one person, what the skill that person gonna be? Because they're gonna have to coordinate, you're probably gonna have to hire external help to get all that functional knowledge.
No, my intention is to find one person that can handle that, those functions.
All of it.
What's not enough?
Right, you're right, that might be my concern with the budget, right? I think to do it well, to do it right, you're gonna need that, you're gonna need that cross-functional collaboration skills, and one person is not gonna be enough.
Okay, thanks. Just a minute, anybody else want to speak before Mr. Sherman goes second time? Oh, a new town council member. And you are?
Hi, I'm Julie Smith Galvin, Twenty-eight Grafton Street, one of the new town counselors. And as you all know, I just finished my campaign, and I spent four months talking with many people in Wakefield. And I really do think communications is a fundamental issue that this town has. I support the original budget and ask that you say no to what is proposed by FinCom, although I respect them. And certainly, we need to be fiscally responsible. I think that we have proof that there's been a lot of accomplishments already made in our communications in terms of the visual budget and streamlining FOIA and many of the things that Steve mentioned. But we absolutely need some upgrades, including mobile-friendly, including an events dashboard, better use of the calendar. And there's some new things like open checkbooks. In terms of, technology's gonna continue to change. I do not think that this is just kind of keeping up with the shiny technology. This is absolutely critical. I'm a communications professional. Eighty-five thousand dollars is a reasonable price. And I think if we just continue to do social media and web updates, kind of on a, you know, dabbling or willy-nilly here and there, we are gonna get into trouble, problems. And so having somebody on, on a regular basis to, to manage that is critical. This is not a cost center. This is an economic issue, I believe, very firmly. This will attract businesses and new residents to Wakefield and be a better service for those who are already here. So I ask you to say no to the FinCom proposal. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman. Oh, you're, okay, sorry, sorry, somebody's there, I didn't see him. Yeah, you gotta get close to those microphones.
Completely done, it's only my second time. Deb Butler, Two Twenty.
Oh, no, 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 this is your second time.
It is my second.
So Mr. Sherman gets to go next.
Of course, Mr. Sherman, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. One of the previous speakers asked about the additional cost of the eighty-five thousand dollar position. And I just did some rough numbers in my head that if you include the healthcare costs, pension costs, and post-retirement medical costs, we, our net is not fifty-five thousand dollars just for the salary. We'd also have to pay Medicare, the one forty-five from Medicare as well. The additional cost that we'd have to pay in benefits is probably in the neighborhood of twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars. It depends on what elections the person takes. So our net is probably closer to seventy-five to eighty-five thousand when you throw in benefits.
Ms. Butler.
This sounds like a fantastic opportunity for someone. Do I have to say Deb Butler, Two Twenty Bain Street again?
Right.
Thank you. I am also, again, for the, yep, I am for the position. I just want to point to clarification. Is this a full-time position or is it part-time?
Better be. Steve.
Full-time.
Otherwise, I'm applying, and I'm a Luddite.
And is it the expectation that this person will work for the town and not be, not treating it as a subcontract position or have another business that might conflict with it?
Not that conflicts with it, but we do not hold any of our town employees. They can, if they work another job, it doesn't conflict with ours, that's fine.
Great, thank you.
Two minutes.
Christine DeFleece, Thirty-three Lawrence Street. I just, how come Linfield, how come you're not splitting this half and half? And why is Linfield paying any of the health insurance costs and the pension, once they retire, all the pension costs?
In, in every other intermunicipal agreement that we have, there is a, there is a split of those other costs as well. Healthcare pension, when the pension is due. We have, we're bigger, we have, we have more of the bang on this, so that's why we would take more to start. We'll see what happens. That's the same analysis we do with health, with other communities, or building with other communities, or what have you. So it kind of depends on the size and the timeframe we expect.
Okay.
Any further discussion? You're hoping. I'll take that as a point of order. So we are on personal services, Steve, still? All right, now what happens here is, when you have a motion involving an amount of money under, for these purposes, the budget, what happens is, we don't vote on the amendment to take the eighty-five out. What you do is you vote, this is Robert's and Town meeting, you vote on the greater amount. In other words, you accept the greater amount. If you, if you do want to reduce the budget by the eighty-five, which was, or fifty-five in this case, but, but eighty-five for the total position, you vote no, okay? If you want to, if you want to vote against the amendment and you want to go with the original figure proposed by Mr. Mayo, you vote yes. Has everybody got that now? Any, any point of order, any questions? Yeah, okay. When you have motions involving money, you don't vote no, you don't vote whether you take some out. You just vote for the greater amount, okay? Robert's Rules of Order and Town Meeting Time, which should be accepted by the Charter Commission. And so what you do is, we don't vote separately and say, oh, we're taking eighty-five out. We vote on the greater amount, okay? So you're either voting for the amount Steve Mayo proposed, all right, or you're voting, or you're voting no, and then you would vote for the amendment that Mr. Sherman has proposed, okay? Got this? Question, go ahead. Pretty much, yeah. But you're, but the rest of the two, three million is in there too, okay, besides this eighty-five, okay? Mr. Mayo, does the number, your number, would you repeat your number here, just so we know? Just to be clear on the record.
My number is two million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars, with three thousand from available funds and two million, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three from the tax levy as stated in the recommendation.
Okay. We got this clear now? If you vote yes on this, that passes. If you vote no, then we address the lower number. All in favor? All opposed? Oh, motion carries. Okay, next section? Huh? Excuse me? No, not two-thirds at all, I would've counted it. Are you on protection of persons?
Yes, I am.
Protection of persons and property?
That the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of eleven million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and five dollars for protection of persons and property as stated in the recommendation book.
Second. Mr. Mayo.
The protection of persons and property section of the budget for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen has been set at eleven million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and five dollars. The police department budget in this section is five million, seven hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. The increase in this budget includes contractual increases as well as increases in the cost of supplies like Narcan and tasers. This budget provides for a police force of forty-seven police officers, including dedicated school resources, resource officers at the Wakefield Memorial High School, the Galvin Middle School, and the Vocational School, as well as mission-specific positions which focus on domestic violence, mental health, substance abuse, as well as family-related issues. Our police department is recognized by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as an accredited police department. Only twenty or so departments in the state are so distinguished. I believe that not only is this accreditation a testament to the high quality and ideals profited by the chief and his entire corps of officers, but has also been helpful in obtaining grants as well as adopting best practices for the day-to-day operations designed to better serve the public while reducing the risk of lawsuits. We owe a great debt of gratitude to the police chief and his department. The fire department budget is five million, three hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The increases are in contractual and negotiated areas, as well as a hundred thousand dollars for the overtime line item. In order to maintain both fire stations, we often have to bring firefighters when, when staff is sick, injured, or in military duty on overtime, so each apparatus is properly and safely manned. Article nine tonight will address that fact for the year as a number of firefighters were out. Hopefully, we will not be back next year with a similar article. I'm happy to say that this budget continues to include the fire prevention officer provision, maintains the Greenwood Fire Station, as well as our continued adoption of best practices by ensuring that an officer is manning every piece of equipment. By funding this budget, we will be able to keep both fire stations open and staffed. I continue to believe that the full staffing of the department will lead to reduction in overtime expenses and will provide savings and provide better service to the citizens. The remaining areas of this section remain unchanged. The recent number of fires, while tragic, is a sound reminder of how important this department is to the safety of the town. We are grateful for the good work they all do. Emergency management is level-funded. The fire alarm, police signals, and traffic lights portion of this section are level-funded. The building in, in department is increased by twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-three dollars due to the expansion of an existing part-time position to assistant building inspector. It is no secret that this department is very busy with multiple major projects under construction in town. I, for one, am very impressed with how the building inspector manages these projects and keeps them clean, neat, and safe for the entire community. This assistant will have the statutory authority necessary to not only manage the department and the process, but will also have enforcement authority over zoning violations. This department continues to be a great revenue source. This is the building department, generating close to seven hundred thousand this year in fees. The remaining budget in this section are virtually level-funded with the exception of contractual obligations. The entire amount requested for protections of persons and property is eleven million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and five dollars.
Mr. Sherman.
The Finance Committee unanimously agrees with the town council and the town administrator and urges favorable action on this portion of the article.
Discussion under the protection of persons and property. There being no discussion, the motion before you is to approve eleven million, eleven million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and five dollars. All in favor? All opposed? That portion carries. Mr. Mayo.
Human Services section, that the town raise and appropriate from tax levy the sum of eight hundred and eighteen thousand, twelve dollars for human services as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayo.
The request for the Human Services portion of Article One is eight hundred and eighteen thousand, twelve dollars. The requested budget for Council on Aging is two hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty, four hundred and forty-five dollars. And this is more, seven thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars more than the current year's budget, the bulk of which is contractual. The Council on Aging services the approximately five thousand citizens of Wakefield age sixty years of age and over. The council works with older adults and families to provide the latest information related to seniors, as well as providing the needed services for them. Education seminars and subjects ranging from insurance, Medicare, estate and financial planning, to exercise classes, health presentations, bi-weekly blood pressure checks, podiatry clinics, and cholesterol screenings are offered to educate and promote healthy living. Transportation services are also available to medical appointments, shopping, and center activities. The corrugation, the corrugate meal site offers a daily balanced meal in a friendly social setting. Social activities such as travel, card games, special events, and volunteer opportunities promote the continued socialization and participation of the town's senior residents in the community. And this year, you may have seen this posted, the Council on Aging is undergoing a survey to see what people, what services people desire in Wakefield, really for almost all ages. So stay tuned to see what we found out there. To provide all these services for what amounts to a very small portion of our overall budget is quite a testament to the staff and our director, Judy Luciano. The Board of Health budget is recommended at two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. This increase reflects the fact that Redding has opted out of the partnership we have formed with Merrose, as well as transfer of the Mental Health and Wellness Agreement with William James College of six thousand dollars a year, and the transfer of seven thousand dollars from the DPW budget for larvicide treatments for catch basins. Both items are more appropriate in this department. I am also most grateful for all the work done by this department, especially in the areas surrounding the health and wellness of the community. This department is working on providing walking and bike routes, as well as analyzing how to better provide for the mental well-being of all our citizens. They do programs like In Plain Sight Program, which if you haven't gone and seen this, you really need to do. It's a huge success and does attempt to arm families with information necessary to hopefully contend with drug abuse and opioid problems, some of which are right in their own homes, right under their nose. The Recreation Budget is increased by eight thousand dollars in the personnel area. Embedded in that number is a fact that I have requested our rector, rector Dammagraf to manage the operations at the Civic Center. to manage the operations at the Civic Center. He's done a fantastic job, and I think the programs offered in Wakefield Recreation keep growing and growing, so I encourage you to take, check out the website and take advantage of them. The veteran budget is increased by eleven hundred dollars to two hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and seven dollars. This budget better represents actual veteran benefit, benefit costs at this time. The Veteran Benefit Department administers payments to recipients of hospital and medical benefits, as well as ordinary subsistence benefits. The town has reimbursed up to seventy-five percent of these costs by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The collaboration with Melrose and now Sogas has provided a department which is doing much more for our veterans. Special thanks to our Veterans Advisory Board, uh, for continuing this, um, collaboration, and also they have, um, and, uh, monthly, or at least monthly or weekly, um, food pickup at Town Hall, and you see a lot of veterans coming in and taking advantage of that. Thank you, Dan, in the audience there. This board continues to assist in the best outreach efforts, provide the best possible service for our veterans. I recently had the opportunity to meet with the Secretary of Veteran Services for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Uh, he mentioned to me that the name of Wakefield is often brought up at the State House as an example of what, of a community who cares about its veterans, so kudos to the fine staff. The total recommendation for Human Services Section of Article One is eight hundred and eighteen thousand, twelve dollars, all from tax levy.
Mr. Sherman, Human Services.
The Finance Committee agrees with the, uh, Town Administrator and the Council and encourages favorable action on this portion of the article.
Any discussion on the portion of the budget under Human Services? Don't run.
Hi, Christopher Bossy, eighty-nine Outlook Road. I'd just like a, I mean, this is probably going to get voted for since there's not really an alternative, but I'm just asking as a point of order for the, uh, recreation. Could you just clarify exactly what that is again?
What the recreation portion of the budget is?
Yeah.
That is all of the recreation programs that the town runs. Uh, the town runs, um, lots of summer programs for, um, young and old alike, mainly, mainly kids, it runs out of the Civic Center, um, but flag football, do we have flag football? Where's Dan McGrath? Movies on the Lake, things like that, all these recreation activities.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion before you is we appropriate, uh, eight hundred and eighteen thousand and twelve dollars. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Public Works?
That the town raise and appropriate the sum of six million, five hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars for Public Works, and to provide, provide therefore that the sum of seventy-six thousand, three dollars be appropriated by transfer to the Public Works Personal Services Account from the following accounts: perpetual care income, forty-three thousand; park trust funds available, three dollars; sale of lots funds, three, thirty-three thousand; and the sum of six million, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars be raised and appropriated from tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayo?
The request for the Public Works budget is six million, five hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighteen, eighteen dollars. The bulk of the increases are due to contractual obligations, building maintenance repairs, anticipated increases in vehicle fuel cost, OSHA training to comply with changes in state law, and GMAX testing for our town's four artificial fields. I also might point out, and I'll get into it a little bit later, that a lot of the increase in this budget is due to, um, funds that were moved out of Articles into the DPW budget that we thought was more appropriate. Um, staffing level for Public Works will remain at seventy-six people, and although we, although we continue to place, place more responsibilities and functions under the jurisdictions of this, uh, Public Works Department, the staffing did not change, and a great big thank you is due to Director Stinson and all of his staff. In regards to the annual operating maintenance budget, this year's request has taken a major step towards shifting maintenance-related capital outlay items out of the capital budget and placing these items in the Public Works budget. Additionally, one war, one warrant article, stormwater, has been moved to the Public Works operation budget. These changes resulted, resulted in increases in the Public Works operating budget and subsequent decreases in the capital outlay budget and warrant articles. This change allows us to property categorize operating costs, capital costs, and warrant article costs. The items located, i- items relocated to the operating budget are townwide items and include painting, uh, major HVAC repairs, roof repairs, infrastructure, safety modifications, major drainage repairs, and funding of our NEPTI's stormwater program. Most of the items are funded at the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen dollar amount, with the exception of painting, which has been increased by fifteen thousand, and drainage repairs, which has been increased by thirty-five thousand. Both increases are based on need, as we certainly desire to do more. So a lot of this, about four hundred and seventy thousand of this budget increase was moved over from other departments or from other Articles. The snow and ice budget request is eight hundred thousand dollars, an increase of fifty thousand dollars over fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. This budget has been historically underfunded and did not increase for a ten-year period between two thousand and two thousand and nine, and before that was twenty, during the seventies and eighties, it wasn't increased at all. This budget may be underfunded in fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, as it is estimated that an average winter would cost around a million two, and may require additional funding in coming fiscal years. The five-year average of expenditures for snow and ice operations is one million, thirty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars, so we are inching much closer to that amount, so much for global warming. The budget presented has moved in the right direction and allows for needed improvements in a number of areas. This allows the town to comply with the NEPTI's unfunded federal mandate, and allows the Public Works Department to meet its public safety and first respond to responsibilities. Public Works Department has done an excellent job in preparing their budget and maintaining the town's infrastructure under difficult fiscal constraints. The funding out of this budget is greatly needed and will go a long way to improving a great community. This is a no-frills budget, it is a budget that provides efficient, effective, and economical services to the community. The DPW's professional approach and dedication has been key to maintaining the core services that they provide. The recommendation for this portion of the budget is that six million, five hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars, of which seventy-six thousand and three dollars is from available funds.
Mr. Sherman?
The Finance Committee actually had discussed the fact of moving some of these maintenance items into, uh, DPW budget. One particular member was pushing for it for a number of years, and Finance Committee completely agrees, uh, with the change and the movement, and also agrees with the Selectman's request, and therefore, um, we'd ask favorable action.
Tom Stapleton?
Mr. Stapleton?
Twenty-two Summer Street. My equipment's failing here. Just a little bit of, uh, in regards to the movies by the lake, I just wanted to make a little correction there.
Whoa, 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 Tom.
Is it off?
Last article, last section. Yeah, it was nice of you, though.
Okay.
And we think they're great.
That's not where I was going, but...
That's okay. I thought there was something the matter with the mic when you walked up there. Sorry. It's okay. That could, that could open a floodgate in the south.
Christine DePulis, thirty-three Lawrence Street. It could be listed in here somewhere, but I didn't see it as, how much does the street sweeping cost on, in the DPW parts?
Steve, do you know that's, how much that street sweeping costs?
Might ask Mr. Stinson to answer that.
Rick?
Street sweeping consists of two components. One is the contractual sweeping, which we do, um, in April, we do in the summertime, and we do in the fall. Uh, and that's done contractually with the addition of our sweeper. There's no way we can get it done with one sweeper and the amount of time that's, that we need to finish it. The second part is done in town. We sweep six days a week. Um, that sweeping, um, covers downtown, um, around the lake, covers, uh, the side streets off the downtown, will cover Greenwood, um, section of town, and then that sweeper will go out and sweep other areas around town to keep it, uh, clean. As part of our NEPTI's, uh, permit with EPA, um, and all towns have this requirement, you're required to sweep, uh, X amount, to get debris off the road and keep it from going into storm drains. Um, so that sweeping is probably going to increase with the new NEPTI's permit, which is, will go into effect come September. Um, but right now, that, that program is based on two things. It's based on keeping the town, uh, clean, um, and looking good, but also on our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit.
And it costs how much?
Forty-five, forty-five thousand for contractual, and then the town portion is the labor cost, which I don't have, I, I'd have to pick.
That's a, but, so the forty-five thousand would be for the three times you stayed, like they came last week?
Correct.
Would be one of the...
And also when we, um, if our sweeper goes down and we have a major event like the Fourth of July coming, we will bring in a contracted sweeper.
Okay, well, I didn't know you had the federal requirement, but is there any way that, say, like you're doing it three times now, that, say, for a year or two, you could just do it one time a year and take that money and fix some of the streets? Because I'll tell you right now, the street sweeper is making more debris on a lot of the streets by loosening up all the already loose hot top and spraying it around. The streets are in, like, worse condition than before they swept them, so it's creating hazards by sweeping.
Um, I, I guess two answers to that question. First is no, we cannot. We need to maintain that street, street sweeping program, um, to meet our mandated requirements. Uh, second, um, if the streets unraveling when the street sweeper goes by it, it's going to unravel anyway, so we'd rather know about it sooner than later, so we can fix it.
Okay, well, what about the streets that have been unraveling for like ten years?
Well, that's, that's...
And none of them have, you know, that's like, can...
That's different from...
Do the feds tell you you have to do it three times a year?
Yeah.
That's part of our permit, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Lieber?
Thank you, Daniel Lieber, One Elm Street. I'm trying to figure out where the appropriation for the road maintenance is in this budget, and what the actual amount of that is that has been recommended by Town Council as well as FinCom?
Um, road maintenance being, uh, um, capital-type road maintenance or annual general road maintenance?
The general road maintenance that's built into this budget.
The general road maintenance, and that kind of consists of a couple things. It counts, uh, patching, um, it counts, um... Hey, no. It's not, it's not that, no.
Hey, hey, no yelling out.
The, um, there are a number of items in the budget that make up that, uh, amount, um, and this does not count staffing, this counts for materials and supplies and contractual items. Uh, the amount is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred for roadway, uh, maintenance, and seventy thousand for sidewalk repair. Back in, um, oh, two thousand and four, it was a hundred and twelve thousand, it actually decreased, uh, for a number of years for the roadway portion, and back in two thousand and four, it was twenty-four thousand, seven hundred for the, uh, sidewalk portion. And that had decreased too, for a few years, and then it start, we started to be able to get it back up.
So a hundred and thirty-four thousand for the maintenance?
Hundred and thirty-two, five, for roadway repair. Uh, and that doesn't count paving, that's roadway maintenance, and seventy thousand for sidewalk repair.
Is a hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars sufficient in your professional opinion to repair the roads as they currently exist in April thirtieth, twenty eighteen?
I love that question, it's the best one you, yeah. Short answer is no.
What would be an appropriate amount to reasonably, to reasonably get the roads in a, in shape so that they are not subject to immediate deter, further deterioration?
Um, it's, in actuality, it's not a simple answer, because the, there's two things that would need to occur. It's not just increasing that amount of money, uh, in order to do that, you have to look at the staff you have. Uh, I would also need to increase staff in order to accomplish that work. Um, so the staffing level, if you gave me an extra amount of money that, whatever I wanted, I could not complete it with the staff that I have. So...
So it, it, the reason behind this, I gave you one easy question, one hard question, I apologize for that. If, if there were a motion to increase the amount of this budget to potentially help, would you be able to contract out some of that road maintenance to improve the current situation? Because as brought up during prior discussions, it's certainly an issue of significance. The sidewalk, seventy thousand, I know that's not going to go very far either, but that's a slightly different issue, but the roads are extraordinarily damaged after this past year's storms. The frost eaves were, were quite detrimental at it.
Uh, we could. Um, I can tell you that it would be, when you have a contractor running around town and not in one place, like when you pave, it would be, you're going to spend more money than if you could do it in-house, so it's not kind of a feasible thing. Um, it is possible, but I wouldn't say that it's feasible.
Okay. Uh, the reason why I'm asking is because I'm looking around and there may be support for an increase in the, in this budget item to, to, to get an improvement for the roads and stop the further deterioration. And, but if, if it's not something that would be able to be spent, it doesn't make sense to make such a motion. So i- is it something that, if the money was there, would it be able to be spent within one, the fiscal year to actually make a material difference?
Uh, I would never turn it down, um, so, um, but, and I'd try to, I'd figure a way out somehow to do it, so...
Okay, with, with that, I am going to make a motion to increase the amount from the tax levy to a total of six million, six hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars, of which six million, five hundred and thirty-six dollars, two hundred and fifteen dollars would come from the tax levy for the, with the intent that the extra one hundred thousand dollars would be directed towards the roadway repairs.
You have it written, I need that in writing. Okay. Huh? Oh, I do have it in there? Oh, Betsy, you have it, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'll give it to you. All right. Discussion? Well, discussion on the budget overall, so, yeah. Point of order? Pardon? No. I, it's, it's, it's an increase of a hundred thousand dollars for the repair of roads, which actually... roads, which actually, it's just an increase of a hundred thousand dollars in the budget, and he would like it to go for the repair of roads, but you can't direct line items under a general budget items. So if you want to get up and go to the microphone, you can ask questions. No, the question is, you asked me this up at the microphone. Okay. She can come down here. Yeah, we just need you to record it. Yeah, you just have to be on a recording. I wasn't trying to be, you know, just can't be yelling out. This'll be fine. Okay, you have to identify yourself and where you live.
I'm Bernice Kelly at thirty, at thirty-eight Grafton Street in Wakefield. We have had a problem since nineteen fifty-three, and they did a study.
Yeah, right, right.
And Grafton Street...
Thank you.
And Harrison Avenue was the last one to do the study two years ago. Nothing has been done about it. We get flooded quite often, and the mistake started in nineteen fifty-three with too small a pipe for the sewer from the brook. I just want to know if it's going to be brought up today.
Oh, okay, okay. Mr. Stinson, can you, the question then is, is this, this motion is to increase ostensibly with the suggestion that it go towards the repair of roads. Will this money in any way address the question that this lady had?
Uh, no, the money in the budget deals with drainage issues that are short fixes. The study that was done and completed two years ago had a total of fifty-six million dollars of improvements. One we funded last year, which was approximately nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There is a list of eleven or twelve projects in that study, of which Grafton Street is one of those projects. That project is somewhere around two fifty, three hundred thousand dollars to do, and that would be a warrant article before town meeting to fund that. What we are going to do this year is a preliminary design, so that we'll come back next year to town meeting and ask for funding for that project.
Can I get a second on Mr. Lieber's motion? Okay, second. Any discussion on the, the overall budget, including Mr. Lieber's motion? In the south?
Alyssa Story, Fifty Star Gav. Mine is actually, hopefully, a simple question, but under here you have a line item called "to be appropriated from the sale of lots funds," and it's thirty-one thousand dollars, then it's increased to thirty-three thousand dollars. Is there an actual sale of lots funds? Is that like selling off town land? Is this somewhere else?
Do you know this?
No, no, that, that is the lots that we sell at Forest Glade Cemetery. So that revenue is available to allocate to the budget.
Okay, thank you.
In the north?
This isn't on the, this is the overall budget, not on the amended budget?
Well, the amendment is now part of a suggestion for the overall budget. We will, we will now vote on the higher number.
Okay, thank you. Raphael McDonald, Eleven Brook Avenue. Just a point about global warming, it's climate change, and that includes increased precipitation, Mr. Mayo, as I'm sure you know, so in fact...
I was being facetious.
I, of course, of course, in case anyone out there didn't know that. But, so I fully support the increase in that budget item.
Bob Mitchell, Six Balding Street. Yeah, I just want to really support Dan Lieber's amendment for the extra, extra cash for the roads. I think it's, there's not much need to say. We all know how important roads are for wheeled pedestrians, on bicycles, baby carriages, runners, cars, the police vehicles, fire department vehicles. A new bike path may come into town. All these things are great for the town, and I just hope you do support the improvement in the roads. Thank you.
Okay. In the south?
Brahman Delavobie, Eight Cyrus Street. I needed a clarification, please. Did I hear someone say that this money can't be directed specifically to roads?
It, it's, it's, yeah, it can't be specifically, you're increasing the budget with a recommendation, but it can't be a directive. You can't line item a number, so...
Okay, so we really don't know where this hundred thousand dollars would go, correct?
Rick, it would be, it would, it would, yeah, it's sort of a...
We, we would, if it was...
Yeah.
Put forth for roads, that's what we would spend it on.
Yeah. You can't technically direct where certain money should go under general budget items, okay?
Right.
But the idea here is you're increasing it for a reason that they know about. How's that?
Is, is that a guarantee then, that if this passes, that that money will be allocated towards roads, or is that not absolute?
It's not absolute, it's understood. How's that?
Ye.
Well, that's the way it is.
I, I just wanted that to...
First of all, that's not a politician thing, that's a legal thing, okay? So that's, go ahead, Rick, yeah.
So you'll know, when you allocate towards our budget, we have three sections. We have, what is it, the salary section, the materials and supplies section, and the contractual section. So if it is in contractual or materials and supplies, it's going to get spent on that item.
But if we can't direct it towards that, then how do we know it's going to be used for that?
Well, you could, the, the way it's listed in the recommendation book, it would go either to contractual or materials and supplies.
Right, yeah.
So you can sort of direct it?
Yeah, fair enough, fair enough, yeah.
Okay, I just, I need to clarify, because I would support this if, if I really honest to goodness knew that it was going towards its intended purpose.
Rick, is that what you're going to use it for?
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
You'll get, you'll get a note, you'll get a card, Del, yeah. Browne, Browne, here we are. Little picture of Rick with a shovel. You're, you're next, yeah.
Jonathan Shine's, Thirty-four Forest Street. Member of the Finance Committee, but speaking just on, on my own behalf. I, I just want to make sure people are aware, later in the warrant, we do have two articles on capital improvements to roads and sidewalks, Articles Fifteen and Sixteen. You know, my perspective as I think about Mr. Lieber's motion is that while there certainly is an unmet need there, I would argue that that is more of a capital need than, than necessarily sort of a yearly need. And so from my perspective, I, I would actually encourage sticking with the, the Town Council and the Finance Committee's recommended budget, and then bringing this discussion into the discussions that we'll have later on Articles Fifteen and Sixteen. Thank you.
In the south?
Stephen Tullock, Twelve Fairmount Ave. Mr. Stinson, I guess this would be directed towards you. Carrying on what the last, the last speaker asked, would this additional money be, do you believe it would be better applied towards repaving some of the things that are going to happen in the, the later articles, or as I understand this, this would be just for patching current road rather than resurfacing?
Well, and, and I have a long discussion on that when we get to Article Fifteen, but in reality, we need both. And so, and there's so much money you have to allocate to all town items, so it's how it's allocated. There's a lot of roads that I cannot go out and pave because there is gas work that needs to be done on those roads. So, and those roads are going to have more maintenance on them than they will than the other ones.
Thank you.
In the south?
Christopher Bossy, Eighty-nine Outlook Road. There are just two things I'd like to make a point about with this not roads but roads appropriation. The first one, funny thing about water, unlike every other liquid, it gets bigger when it freezes. And so every winter, the snow melts, water gets into the cracks, it freezes, becomes ice, the cracks get bigger, keeps happening every thawing and freezing cycle. And so I would argue that road maintenance really is more of a yearly thing because every year we're not fighting it, it gets worse. And the other thing, I'm a teenager, I drive to school. Don't you feel good hearing that? But, and I, and so when I drive my screaming metal death trap to school every day, along with probably over a hundred other seniors and maybe a few dozen juniors and sophomores, I think we'd all feel a lot safer if we removed one more danger factor on that drive and put this money towards hopefully the roads. Thank you.
In the north?
Bob McGlaughlin, Three Seventy-six Water Street. Through you, Mr. Moderator, I have a question for Mr. Stinson. When national grid comes plowing through Wakefield on Broadway and North Ave and Salem Street, I believe, is there a potential benefit, I mean, I'm sure there's a potential benefit for the, because they're going to repave curb to curb on that project. Do you know what the dollar amount benefit that would be in regards to the road budget for this year?
They're going to pave approximately two miles of road.
Yes.
So it's probably going to be around seven hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, so we're going to get a benefit on that one right there.
Is that, is that included, is your question, is that included in this year's budget?
Uh, I believe it is, isn't, are they going to be doing that this year?
Uh, no.
No.
Oh, they're not?
No, no. It's been, they're not going to start construction until probably two thousand nineteen.
Oh, so I'm just jumping ahead, sorry.
Yeah, any paving would be two thousand twenty.
Okay, thank you.
In the north?
Jim Scott, Seventy-five Elm Street. How you doing, Mr. Moderator?
I'm doing all right, Jim, how you doing?
You're looking well.
Yeah.
Now, isn't there Chapter Ninety money available for this, from the allocation from the state? Don't you have a good sum from the state for this?
Uh, well, I was going to do this as part of my comments for the Article Fifteen, but Chapter Ninety is about sixty-six, six hundred and sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which is about thirty-one point cent, thirty-one percent of our need. Last year, it, Chapter Ninety represented about thirty-seven or thirty-eight percent of our need. We need to spend two point one million a year on paving, and we get about six hundred and sixty-six thousand from Chapter Ninety.
Now, that will be used for repaving, right?
Repaving, maintenance.
In other words, some of our streets, I agree with people here tonight, our roads are in terrible shape. And a good example is Vernon Street, it's a disaster, Lormont Street, and there's quite a few others. Now, if this doesn't pass in this article, we could bring it up again in Article Fifteen? Is that right, Mr. Moderator? Because I think generally speaking, I think you're getting the message, we got some bad roads in the town of Wakefield.
Yeah, this is for repair, I think, or the capital is for repaving. Is that a fair assessment? Okay, yeah, getting a lot of shaking, yeah, getting a lot of affirmation here. Yeah, so this is for repair, to increase the, the repair section.
Oh, repair and resurfacing are two different things, aren't they?
You're going to have to ask this guy. Hey, Rick?
Yeah.
Repair is different from resurfacing, correct?
Correct.
Aren't they, aren't, they're two different things, aren't they?
Right. Repair, repair money is in our operating budget.
Yeah, that's patching and...
The additional paving money for roadway paving is in Article Fifteen, and it's a capital item.
Well, we could do that under Article Fifteen and add some money, right? From my understanding of...
You could.
You could, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion under the DPW portion of the budget? Are you up again?
No.
Okay, okay, just to be clear here, procedurally, we have two amounts before us, okay? And so we will vote on the greater amount, which would then include Mr. Lieber's additional one hundred thousand dollars, okay? So if you vote yes, the budget will increase from six, six five, one two, two one eight to six six, one two, two one eight. Any procedural questions on that? Same as last time, greater amount gets voted on and you include the whole thing, okay? There being no procedural questions. All in favor of the increased amount suggested by Mr. Lieber to the budget of six million, six hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars, raise your hand. All opposed? Ooh, we got to count this, kids. Tellers, here we go. Yes. Fifty percent. Excuse me, if you have a point of order, can you stand up? What's your point of order? Fifty percent plus one, a majority. Mr. Hatfield stands corrected. All in favor, hands in the air. Hey, Tony, I was dealing with a procedural point, don't be giving out orders here. Keep your hand in, in the air until you're sure you have been counted. Oh my goodness, the one thing she has to do when she's not here. Just saying. You got these numbers for me, boys?
Thirty-four in the south.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-seven in the center.
Nope, twenty-eight. All opposed to the greater amount. Keep your hand in the air, this would be the original amount proposed by the Selectment and the Finance Committee.
So that's ninety-nine?
Some numbers, guys, down here.
Thirty-five in the south.
Thirty-five. Thirty-one.
Fifty-three mid.
Okay, what's that, oh, two? Thirty-five. Was that fifty-three? Fifty. Five-three, okay. Okay. Ninety-nine in favor, one nineteen opposed. The budget remains as proposed by the Selectment and the Finance Committee. All right, next up. Pardon? No, you're up next now. If it doesn't pass, if it doesn't pass, the, the lower number automatically goes. Yeah, yes, yeah. Robert's rules, am I right? Yes, I am. I reviewed this with Tommy Mullin, and Yale and I went over this completely because we knew amendments would come during the budget. Under Robert's rules of order in the town meeting, this is, your, your budget's in front of you. If you want to raise it, you vote yes. If you don't vote to raise it, then the other one carries, correct? Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to move on to...
Public Works Enterprise.
Public Works Enterprise.
That the town raisin appropriate the sum of thirteen million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars for Public Works Enterprise departments, and to provide therefore that the sum of five million, eight thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars be appropriated by transfer from water receipts to the various water division budget accounts listed in the recommendation book, and the sum of eight million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars be appropriated by transfer from sewer receipts to the various sewer division budget accounts listed in the recommendation book.
Mr. Mayo?
The water and sewer divisions are self-sustaining departments and are not part of the tax levy. These two budgets are well structured and ensure that we continue to maintain and improve our water sewer infrastructure and provide safe drinking water to the community. The budget has, this budget is in, on the water enterprise side, this budget has increased sixty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars, or one point three percent. The major increases in the water division budget are related to contractual obligations and a change in one of the chemicals used at the treatment plant. In fiscal year two thousand nineteen, we will be eliminating aqua ammonia from the treatment process and switching to ammonium sulfide, also called liquid ammonium sulfide. The new chemical will improve safety for treatment plant operators, maintenance staff, suppliers, and others. It's important to note that the MWRA water assessment decreased for fiscal year two thousand... The final MWRA assessment will not be set until late June and may increase or decrease depending on the final MWRA budget that is adopted. Public Works Department has done an excellent job in minimizing increases in this budget. The sewer enterprise side, the budget has increased $320,624, or 4.06 percent. The major increase in this budget relates to the MWRA sewer assessment, which has increased $218,622. In fact, without the MWRA increase, the sewer portion of our budget would have increased a mere 1.29 percent. The changes in the town's portion of the budget are related to contractual obligations, maturing debt, and minor increases in maintenance cost. It is important to note that the MWRA sewer assessment represents 77.1 percent of the total sewer budget. The final MWI sewer assessment will not be set until late June and may increase or decrease depending on the final MWRA budget that is adopted. Both the water and sewer budgets are well structured and ensure that we continue to maintain and improve our water sewer infrastructure, provide safe drinking water, and allow the Public Works Department to meet its public safety and first responder responsibilities. The DPW has done an excellent job in minimizing increases in this budget. The recommendation for this portion of the budget is that $13,232,877 be appropriated from the respective enterprise divisions.
The Finance Committee moves for, recommends favorable action on this article.
Mr. Lieber has raised a point of order on our last motion, and since we have not moved on this one discussion yet, Mr. Lieber thinks that because the, we didn't vote on the underlying motion, and I'm going to take a provisional vote for later on when we're in front of the judge, so all in favor of the original, this is back on the Public Works Department, the number that is, does not include Mr. Lieber's $100,000, that would be 6,0512218. You can either vote yes to appropriate that, or you can vote no to not appropriate that amount of money. Okay? All in favor? All opposed? Provisional vote carries. There you go, Dan. Or, thank you. All right. Mr. Mayo, you're back. You're, Mr. Sherman, you already went. Your discussion, your...
Questions and our discussions.
Questions and our discussions under Public Works Enterprise Department. Is it our bottom number? Is it the 1323?
Yes, it is.
Okay. The motion before you was to appropriate, under the Public Works Enterprise Department, All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Smith. School Committee.
Move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $40,143,324 for the school department, and to provide therefore that the sum of $115,000 be appropriated by the transfer to the school department contractual services, bus transportation allocation, from the offset receipts 2017 bus transportation user fees, and that the sum of $40,028,324 be raised and appropriated from the tax levy. The total recommendation for the school department budget is $40,143,324.
Sir, second?
Second.
Dr. Smith.
So I start my presentation with just this brief slide, which is a quote that was seen in the Boston Globe recently. You know, excellent schools are truly the hallmark of a community, and this quote in the Globe was about Wakefield and what attracts young families to Wakefield, and I think it's really important to note that, that strong schools is certainly a major factor in that. So really, in the last five years, as noted earlier by Mr. Sherman, we've really made tremendous strides in the Wakefield Public Schools, and we have implemented a very strong strategic action plan, which is largely the reason for this, and there are three components of that strategic action plan which are pertinent in, in forming the budget this year, and that is that we're investing in rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet the individual needs of students. Many people have asked me that, you know, as we have made some significant financial investments over this same five-year period, are these financial investments making a difference? And so I've highlighted here some of our student performance outcomes, which I think are really important, on the state assessment just this past year, our seventh-grade students scored the third-highest growth percentile in the Middlesex League, only behind Winchester and Lexington. That is really impressive. Wakefield Memorial High School achieved a Level One accountability rating. This is the fourth school in Wakefield to achieve this distinction in the past two years, and Wakefield Memorial High School joins Lexington, Winchester, Melrose, and Arlington as the only Level One high schools in the 12-member league. Wakefield Memorial High School scored the second-highest performance level and the third-highest growth percentile in the entire Middlesex League. So between our strategic action plan and the strong investments of our communities past five years, we've made tremendous strides. So we developed the budget for FY '19. We received a lot of input and feedback from key stakeholders, our district and school leaders, our faculty and staff, and certainly our parent community, and we have really engaged in a very collaborative, collaborative process among community leaders. The school committee, finance committee, and town administrator have worked very closely together for months in developing this budget, and then recently we received some feedback from our town council as well. So it's been truly a collaborative process. We, the priority additions to this budget were achieved largely by working through some budget cuts and reorganization to make space for some key priorities. And listed here are some of these priority additions, and this is really the important pieces of this FY '19 budget that I believe are really critical for the schools. This budget increases specialized personnel to provide reading intervention support among other academic and social emotional supports that our children need. We are increasing our nursing staff to meet the emerging and growing health needs of our children. This budget really continues our focus on high-quality curriculum and instruction for all children. It values the arts as an integral experience in whole-child development, and it strengthens our K-12 library media centers, really bringing them up to par with current digital and print publications, resources, and makerspaces. And the other piece we're really pleased about is in partnership with the town. This budget implements a second reduction of extracurricular activity fees for our students, reducing the cost just in 2016, '17, it cost $275 to participate in one season, one sport, and this, in this fiscal year, this would be our second reduction to bring that cost down to $175 per activity. That is a real, will be a real help to our families, and this budget also meets our essential special education needs. So there are three major budget areas, you know, to kind of think about. The first is our personnel costs. That represents over 80 percent of our budget, and then we have our operational costs, and then the third piece, which, which has been very important both in FY '18 and in FY '19 and certainly beyond, is our special education out-of-district tuitions. This is important to discuss this evening because these are very unpredictable costs, really unlike any other budget area, and to this point, the state has not met its funding obligation, and I'll talk a bit about that a bit later. But in each of these three areas, here's just, the next three slides just show the increase and decrease from FY '18. You can see that our personnel total is an increase of 3.91 percent. Our operational costs, I think we did a really good job of really trying to level fund this area. We were able to put some dollars towards contracted services for our students and the instructional supplies and technology we need for our students, and we were able to balance this out with some cuts and some good projections with utilities, transportation, maintenance, and so forth, and, and some other strong work with the budget. And then this slide just tells the story of special education, the out-of-district tuition piece, and the increase from FY '18. So we have about 3,500 students enrolled in the Wakefield Public Schools. You may or may not know that about 40 students attend out-of-district schools for their special education needs. They attend 25 different school placements for a range of disabilities. That's approximately 1.16 percent of our population. That's actually comparatively low to other districts in our region. And you can see that the cost of these out-of-district placements is significant. You know, you can see that in FY '18, it cost us over $4.2 million to place students in out-of-district schools, and we do get funding from the state. It's called circuit breaker funding, and the state did not meet its obligation to fund at 75 percent this year. This is not just Wakefield, this is all districts in the, in the state, and we received 65 percent, which meant that we received $210,000 less than expected this year. At this time, the state is looking at potentially funding a little further towards the end of the fiscal year. I'll talk about that a little bit more in Article 10. But at any rate, we, in addition to the, the funding that came in less than expected, we had 11 unanticipated student placements since the FY '18 budget was approved. So the cost of that is significant, as you can see here on the slide. We've worked throughout the year to make up that amount, but it does translate into a little more than a half million dollars that we will need to budget in FY '19. So as a result of that, you can see that the increase in special education for next year amounts to 1.42 percent. So the summary of the increase and decrease in these three major areas of the budget, you can see here depicted on this slide, so the net total increase for the Wakefield Public Schools is $2.1 million, or 5.54 percent. And finally, just in wrapping up, I'm tremendously proud of the Wakefield Public Schools and the work that we've done. This picture here is just another point of how well we're doing. The Commissioner of Massachusetts came out to visit the Wakefield Public Schools. This was the first visit in Wakefield's history. He was really intrigued by the excellent work that is happening here in Wakefield, and it was really wonderful to, to have him there. So I have served in this community for 32 years, and, and I could not be more proud than I am today of the work that has taken place in the Wakefield Public Schools. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman.
The Wakefield Finance Committee spent considerable time with the school committee. We had a special finance subcommittee that worked with them, spent a lot of time, tried to avoid some of the problems we had a year ago, and I think we have avoided those, and the Finance Committee unanimously approves this budget and encourages favorable action.
In the south?
Gerard Lehman, 10 Fox Road, member of that subcommittee Dan just mentioned. Echo Dan's comments, and I just want to thank Lori Wheeler, our subcommittee chairwoman, who really led us in collaborating with our school committee colleagues on their subcommittee, and Dr. Smith, Mr. Lyons as well, if you're here, didn't see him, serious. Doug, thank you. Just two, two points that I thought we found compelling as a collective, that I wanted this group to understand a bit of our diligence. That slide that Dr. Smith put up showing the, the concrete results relative to Middlesex League towns, I think was the first time I saw that in my eight years on the, on the Finance Committee, and that's one of the returns on investment things we had been asking for, right after the lean years when I joined, and up through the hockey stick spending. You know, it's, it's been, you know, 4 percent, 5 percent, 11, whatever, in that range for a good amount of years. So the school committee and the administration taking that stuff and, and kind of proving out to this body that there is some return on investment, is welcomed by us, and I think should be welcomed by everyone here. The sped costs are probably going to keep going, and I hope you guys didn't lose that in, in Dan's opening presentation. As you invest more in sped, it's, it's likely that you'll get some sped tourism. I'm, I'm a sped parent myself. But I, I still say, you know, some of those medically fragile cases, if you've ever seen them, are absolutely heartbreaking. So they are very hard costs. I know Mr. Markham or other folks can speak in more eloquent detail than I, but this budget with the proven strategy and results is one thing. The fact on one of those last slides that the administration held the line on real controllable costs was also persuasive to us, so I just asked this body to take into consideration that we, as a Finance Committee, certainly did our diligence, both in subcommittee work and in our full committee work, and I think this is an excellent swan song for Dr. Smith. Thank you.
In the north?
Alyssa Story, 50 Stark Ave. Would you mind going back one slide to the special education, the one that shows the out-of-district costs? I guess, okay, one more back. Right here. Is this what you're saying the cost or increase would be for special education in general, a 1.42 percent increase, and that that is going to cover out-of placement students? Is that all that this is covering, the whole budget?
So the 1.42 percent increase is for special education out-of-district placements. Does that answer your question?
So there are other places that special education would get funding?
Yes, yes. So special education is part of the holistic budget. It kind of appears in all, if I, if I went back to the, all the operational costs and all, all the other parts of the budget, special education's kind of a through line throughout the entire budget, but this is just for out-of-district placements. This is the 41 students who are in out-of-district schools.
So for 41 students, it costs over $4 million to send them to out-of-district schools?
Yes, it does.
That's a relative cost? Is that normal?
It is. Yes, it is.
I know there's been conversation around, and I don't know if that is Article 10 that comes up, that special education is not on a solid track. I don't feel it is, and to put this much information out there just on out-of-district, we're talking about sending kids to other schools instead of providing them here in our schools what they need in special education.
So the 40, these students, as you can see, they attend 25 different schools for a range of disabilities, and these, the disabilities that these children have are significant to the point that they are, we're unable to meet their needs. While we meet the needs of the vast majority of disabilities that students might have, these students' needs exceed the, the level that we can provide.
And you anticipate 11 more?
No, this, this includes the 11 students that I talked about over the last year.
So this amount of, like, this amount of dollars being set aside would be specifically for out-of-school, out-of-district placements?
This increase does reflect the increase in out-of-district placement costs, yes.
Is there anywhere within the budget where it's taking into consideration increasing the staff here to keep some of these students?
So increasing the staff here would not necessarily keep these students in district. I think that sometimes that might be a misconception, that adding one or two or more teachers might do that. There are some students that have some very significant disabilities that we are not able to meet their needs here in district. But we do have many specialized personnel. I think in an earlier slide, when I talked about the budget priority additions, you saw that there are, some of the dollars that we're putting in are to add, you know, and continue to add to the specialized personnel we have here, but really, the types of disabilities we're talking about are very complex, and more complex than a public school, any public school could provide. And as it shows on this slide, we actually are relatively low compared to our neighbors and our like districts in terms of the percentage of students that are out of district.
and our like districts in terms of the percentage of students that are out of district.
Okay. I guess I would just recommend that we be able to allocate not just for the out-of-district tuition, but an amount of money to improve what we have currently. I know we only have one reading specialist in the Galvin, for example. And if we could look at improving what we currently have in the school systems in Wakefield for special education, and again, this might be covered in Article 10, and I'm sorry if that's redundant, but I think it's a huge, for me, I'm looking over the school budget, and I want to see special education increased.
So, this year, thank you, I appreciate that. And this year, we did, in the budget priority additions, we have $75,000 in that budget line to increase reading services in the Wakefield Public Schools. Thanks to some passionate advocacy from some of our parents, we were able to include that.
Okay, and that's part of this?
I think that's what you're kind of, you're advocating for as well, I believe.
Yes.
Yes, and that is part of the additions in this budget.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
In the South, Mr. Lieber?
Great. First of all, thank you for presenting the budget in a way that's very consumable. The students have been really doing exceptionally well. Having two students myself, I can definitely see where the students are, not just only my daughters, but all of the students are striving to do excellent work, and that is the result of the efforts that you've put in. At some point, Mr. Moderator, if we could take leave to thank Dr. Smith for her 32 years of service to this district, would be much appreciated that she gets a token appreciation from this body where she has spent many hours in preparing budgets that ultimately have gotten approved at some point or other.
More than token, Dan, come on, let's go wholehearted. There you go.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Lieber, and thank you, everyone. It's been my honor to serve this community I love so much. Thank you.
Thank you, and I really do recommend supporting this budget. Thank you.
I still really like all the band stuff you used to do. Just saying. In the North?
Thank you, Shane McCarthy, 14 Old Colony Drive. Again, more a comment and a question. I too commend the great work that you've done and the employees of the Wakefield Schools have done in the school committee, so thank you. I also have two students in the Wakefield School System, so very happy, and that's why we moved here. So, very pleased with where we're going and where we continue to go. If there's one area I would like to see to continue to grow, there's always something, right? The online research. We were talking about websites earlier and social media, and students now are learning more online, right? So, I'd like to see that more increased, some of the online learning tools. I think that's somewhat limited. I know that was one of the pieces we highlighted, and that comes to my question. How much are we looking to increase that by? What would the total budget be for online learning resources?
May I ask my business manager to assist?
Sure.
Michael, do you have your budget book handy? Who's Michael? Yeah, yes. Yeah, I think looking for a dollar or a general dollar figure. I just invite my business manager. If you're looking for something specific, the whole team can come on up here.
Yeah, come on up.
So, I think they're looking for a dollar figure in terms of...
Is it around curriculum or around devices? Hardware or digital online learning tools?
Digital online learning tools, yeah.
Dodge that.
My assistant superintendent, Doug Lyons?
So, the new curriculum that we're purchasing supports online learning, and it also supports kind of digital textbooks, which is a standard part of our purchasing and the proposal that we made last week. So, I don't know if that answers your question specifically.
So, maybe I can do that. Oh. $250,000 is the proposal that was made, and that is incorporated in this budget. Now, that, and that's annual. That was part of the 11.4 percent increase in 2016, and so that has, that now lives annually in the budget, which is one of the reasons we've made tremendous strides in curriculum over the last five years as a result of that add.
Great. Yeah, I think that's a step in the right direction, so, again, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Little test run, Doug. In the South?
Suzie Vayner, 15 Ebor Ave. Dr. Smith, I just had a question of clarification on this slide. The 11 unanticipated students are all out-of-district that were unanticipated?
That is correct. So, the budget is developed really and presented, I present the budget in February, so it's a long time from February into the next, the next school year.
So, that's a pretty big chunk of the 41, about 25 percent. Do we have funds set aside in case we have more unintended or unanticipated students come into district or actually need to go out of district?
So, this is what I meant when I said this is a really unpredictable part of the school department budget. So, when we get to Article 10 and we talk about stabilization, that's why we have the stabilization fund for exactly this purpose. So, the last two fiscal years, we have not had to go to the stabilization fund, but it's a very volatile, you know, kind of an area of the budget. So, it, you know, we just, this is just one of those years. You know, I'll talk about when we get to stabilization, it's almost like our snow and ice, if you will, that that's, you know, that kind of, that instability. But, you know, based on the cost this year, we're really very, very tight financially, which is why we'll need to go to the stabilization fund. But typically, this circuit breaker reimbursement, especially if funded, you know, as promised by the state, can help support over time some unanticipated out placements that might come our way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In the North?
Hello, Sarah Rorick, 89 Cedar Street, Wakefield. I just wanted to say thank you to putting so much effort into both this presentation and all the research that went into it, and for Ken, for listening to the literacy concerns and the need for more special education around literacy. I think it's such an important thing everywhere, from kindergarten to high school, that kids learn to read and they learn to be strong readers, and that they, you know, they learn to be able to function in society afterwards. So, I just want to thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I agree with you. Thank you, Sarah.
In the North?
Mark Luca, 359 Water Street.
Where you've been hiding.
I don't have a problem with what took place and what you're trying to do to correct the situation, but I have a problem with the logic of taking the $573,000, accepting it as an increase, and including it in your budget. I am of the belief that a lot of this is unanticipated expenses. We have a reserve fund transfer fund to take care of unanticipated expenses. Right now, it's being proposed as $300,000. I am suggesting that you take 200 of this amount that you're asking for and put it into the reserve fund transfer so that when the Finance Committee looks at all these unexpected expenses, they can make the intelligent questions and decisions on what to do with that money. So, in effect, I'm not asking for any cut in expenses. All I'm asking is that you transfer 200,000 out of your budget and put it into reserve fund so that the Finance Committee can oversee where there may be extenuating circumstances, where they could pay the difference.
So, you're making a motion?
Not yet.
Okay.
I'm also against the fact that we have a $40 million budget, and when I look at the book here, there's four line items. When you look at whether it's capital expenditures or DPW, you've got a list and list of different places where the money's being spent. But on schools, you have four line items. I just don't understand how you can expect the townspeople to vote on four line items without having enough detail. Go ahead, Mr. ... Good. That's it for now.
Okay, so the first, back to your first one.
Yes. All right, I'm going to attempt the first one, Mark.
Okay.
So, last fall, the Finance Committee became aware of the problem with the 11 additional students, and initially, the numbers, and correct me if I'm wrong, was something north of $560,000 that the school committee was short to cover those people. So, initially, I thought, well, we could, you know, use some of our reserve fund, but reserve fund was at 300,000, not 560, and we, it's the beginning of the fiscal year, and who knows, because as you know, the fire department was a regular user of the reserve fund. We've spent anywhere from 150 to 200-plus thousand dollars on the reserve fund, and none of that went to the schools. So, what we requested of the school department back in October was figure out a way to get those costs down. Well, they'd already started doing that. To Dr. Smith's credit, she froze many of her budgets back in October, said no spending, period. We've got a $560,000 problem. So, we left it up to the school committee to continue to whittle that down any which way they could. But in the back of my mind, I knew that we could tap that reserve fund transfer ability if the school department was unable to come up with the money. In Article, I believe it's eight, where we're going to transfer $175,000 out of the stabilization fund, that's going to deplete that fund down to about $8,000. Initially, I was going to, proposing a article for this year's town meeting to reestablish that or add to that $8,000, because I believe that the stabilization fund for sped should be closer to $450,000 or $500,000. Then it takes a two-thirds vote of town meeting to take the money out to spend. So, what we decided to do was defer replenishing that fund until the fall town meeting. We'll see how our free cash comes out, you know, July 1st, and then at fall town meeting, there'll be an article to get the 8,000 back up to a much higher number yet to be determined. That's the plan.
Would that, in effect, reduce the amount of money that would be needed next year out of the regular budget?
It could, because then we'd have that stabilization fund available in case there's another bad year. Like, if fiscal year 19 is bad, then we'd have the funds to deal with, you know, another, say, a dozen placements.
I just think that, go ahead, I'm sorry.
May I just add to one point, thank you, Mr. Sherman, one point of clarification, and then maybe one comment, some of which I was going to talk about in Article 10, but I'll address it now. So, first of all, the actual amount, the deficit we were running back in September and October was $690,000. It was actually worse than what Dan just indicated. We were able to recover 515,000. I froze the budget in October. We worked hard all year to save in maintenance, operational personnel, and supply lines. We were able to whittle it down to the point where we are only requesting the 175 from stabilization. The stabilization fund currently has 185 in it. The other point that I was going to make a little bit later is that the governor may approve additional money by the end of this fiscal year to be distributed to schools. There's been quite an outcry across the state because everyone is struggling. This is not about Wakefield. This is all districts in the Commonwealth. So, they've been working hard on Beacon Hill on this issue. So, some money may come back to us. So, at that time, should money come back to us, I'll be working with my team, with the school committee, Finance Committee, and Town Administrator on how we can maybe support, refresh that stabilization fund, contribute back to that, and perhaps keep some in our revolving account for any unanticipated placements that should come up. And then, in answer to your other question, you mentioned something about three or four budget lines. I hope it wasn't misleading in my presentation. I tried to kind of just chunk the three major budget areas to try to help tell the story or the narrative in a way that everyone could really kind of understand it. But the actual budget has many, many, many lines in it, and anyone who would like to look at it more in depth, it is posted on our website, the entire budget.
I understand that.
Okay, okay.
Number one, I'm not questioning the authenticity of the cost increases, and I know your people have done a good job on that. I don't have a problem with that. I'm just concerned about how we plan for it and how we reconcile it. And I think if you put more money in the federal, in the reserve fund, it would be scrutinized even more by the Finance Committee and the school to make sure that the numbers are right.
And I think that's exactly the partnership that we're talking about, that Mr. Sherman's talking about at fall town meeting, trying to really bring that amount up so that that is something, a very transparent process that we can, we can go through together.
Right. And, you know, I think if you had more detail in the appropriations book, it would probably cut out a lot of questions or make things a lot easier to understand. For example, you talk about increases have taken place, especially like steps in salaries. I understand all of that, but what amount are steps? And is that going to grow even more in the future years? And are you going to be in a position where the expected increase for the schools of 4% will never be met? And if that's the case, I think we should address it now.
Thank you.
I'm not going to make a motion, Mr. Moderator. I just want to make the point about looking at different ways to do things.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
In the South?
I had a couple of questions for clarification. Is the increase we're looking at here 5.54 percent?
That is correct, yes.
That's correct, okay. When you add the monies from Article 10 to that, what would the increase be?
So, the Article 10 is for fiscal year 18.
Okay. All right, so what would the increase be?
So, that's for FY18. The 5.54 percent is an increase for FY19.
Okay. The reason I ask is because I've spoken to this before. I understand the unforeseen expenses, and I'm a lifelong educator myself, so I know a bit about what's concerned in budgeting. But what year was it again, Dr. Smith, that we gave the school the 11 percent increase?
I believe that was FY16.
I believe so too, thank you. I voted for that because there had been sort of underfunding for quite some time. But I do recall that at that time, there was a promise and agreement made that the school committee would keep their funding to 4 percent for the next, how many years? Couple of years, three years, four years, correct?
Mr., excuse me, Mr. Sherman says three.
Three years, okay. So, are we over the three-year threshold now?
Mr. Sherman, are we over the three-year threshold now?
No.
No, okay. So, then, let me ask, what happened to the 4 percent promise by the school committee? After the town voted to give you the 11 percent, the subsequent years came in over 4 percent, and not by just a little bit, but by kind of, you know, a considerable amount?
So, I think this slide, you know, in my opinion, shows our effort to stay as close to that sort of, you know, understanding that landscape or expectation. Our budget is actually, you know, the personnel and operational costs, which is a large portion of the budget, we were able to really achieve very close to about that amount, kind of really understanding that that's what we were looking for. But I really think that the narrative of the story of this budget has to do with special education out-of-district tuitions, and how that really kind of, you know, changed the picture a little bit, and that 1.47 percent, I'm sorry, 1.42 percent really is what ticks it up over what we had expected. what we had expected. And that is just the reality of the school department budget.
And I do appreciate that. However, it does speak to the notion that this body voted to give you the 11% with subsequent agreement on 4% with the understanding that the school committee would abide by that agreement, and it has not. I mean, I am, as I said, a lifelong educator. I understand the notion of investing in our students and unexpected needs, but there is the notion that everyone else has a budget to keep, and I have a budget to keep, everyone here has a budget to keep, and there's just so much money. And I just wanted to bring it to this body that the school committee, I'm sure, has worked very hard on its budget, but has not complied with the arrangement that it made with this body. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the school department budget? Yes, in the South.
Hi, Deb Butler, 220 Main Street. I'm not sure if I have my exact facts in front of me. I think to say that the special education budget is what brought you over does not bring up the contract negotiations that actually, in fact, brought you over budget. Just wanted to make that point.
Okay, thanks. Any further discussion? The motion before you is to appropriate $40,143,324. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next up, the library.
That the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,625,472 for the library department, and to provide therefore that the sum of $41,624 be appropriated by transfer to the library materials and supplies account from the library trust fund income available, and the sum of $1,583,848 be raised and appropriated from the tax levy as stated in the recommendation book.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayo.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The request for the library is $1,625,472, actually, $2,869 less than last year. However, Article 25 tonight will essentially increase this budget by $27,000 for the contractual negotiation that was just settled with the library union. So for all intent and purposes, we can consider the library budget increasing by 24,000 or a very modest 1.5%. I am also happy to say that, for the first time in my memory, the materials and supplies or the book budget actually slightly exceeds the state requirement, so we will not need any waiver at all. So thank you for this body for getting us there over the last few years. Our new library director, Kathy McDonald, is doing an excellent job in her position. We enjoy working with her, and the recommendation for the library is $1,625,472. It includes meeting the state main date and does continue the Sunday hours, which are very popular. Thank you.
Mr. Sherman.
The Finance Committee also was very pleased to hear that the books and material supplies line item of the budget was increased sufficient to avoid the waivers that, also in my memory, have always been in place. That's roughly 30 years' worth. So the Finance Committee was pleased and does support this budget. Please vote in favor. Thank you.
Any discussion on the library budget appropriation? There being no discussion, the motion before you is to appropriate $1,625,472. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
That the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,227,468 from tax levy as stated in the recommendation book for the educational school budget.
Vocational school.
Vocational school budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayo.
This budget represents an increase of $44,841 over last year and is based upon the enrollment of 68 students at the Northeastern Vocational School, as well as students at Minutemen Regional in Lexington and Essex North Shore Regional in Danvers. That's two more at the Voke than last year. Much work has been done on this budget, and we certainly see improved relations with the vocational school. I speak frequently with Superintendent DeBarry, and we continue to work together on a number of issues, including the fact that the vocational school needs to embark on a capital plan, and most excitingly, we are collaborating together on what could be a hockey rink up there. Stay tuned for that one. The Voke has also been very, very helpful in providing us with locations to do police department training, as well as being a partner in many other issues, and we certainly appreciate that. The Voke has also adopted many cost-saving measures, including entering the GIC. I will caution the board that this amount is contingent upon the state funding Chapter 70 and regional transportation at the currently stated levels. The requested and recommended amount is $1,227,468.
Mr. Sherman.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Any discussion on the vocational school budget? There being no discussion, the motion before you is to appropriate $1,227,468. All in favor? All opposed? Oh, my next one is my favorite, unclassified. Mr. Mayo.
That the town raise and appropriate the sum of $1,659,631 for unclassified portion of the budget as stated in the recommendation book, and to provide that $1,659,631 be raised and appropriated from tax levy.
Second.
Mr. Mayo.
The recommended total for the unclassified portion of the budget is $1,659,631, an increase of $30,175 over this year's current budget. The true main reasons for the increase in this budget is the increase in the general insurance portion of the budget of $3,575, and the increase in the Medicare portion of $26,600, which is due to the fact of a higher payroll. The Medicare account pays the town share of Medicare, which is 1.45% of pay for anyone hired after April 1st, 1986. The remaining portions are level funded. The recommended portion for the unclassified portion of Article 1 is $1,659,631.
Mr. Sherman.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action.
Discussion on the unclassified portion of the budget? There being no discussion, the motion before you is to appropriate $1,659,631. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Mayo, benefits and administration.
That the sum of $16,638,911 be raised and appropriated from tax levy for benefits and administration as stated in the recommendation book.
Second.
Mr. Mayo.
The amount requested for benefits and administration reflects an increase of $299,038 over last year's budget. The program of benefits provided by the employees retirement system and the group insurance budget is set by statute with the employees' contribution to the group insurance cost determined by negotiations. The appropriation for the retirement system fiscal year 2019 is $4,348,900, reflecting an increase of $298,538, or 7% over last year. The appropriation is based on an amortization schedule the town initiated in fiscal year 1988, and is updated every two years, and is scheduled to end in fiscal 2035. Right, Mr. Sherman? I'm not, not 2035?
No. Did you read this number, but you meant this one?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. Thank you. But still 2035? Still 2035, okay. The workers' compensation budget request for fiscal year 2019 is level funded. Now for the, I think, the highlight of the show. In January 2012, the town of Wakefield was one of four communities who were able to join the state's group insurance commission. This was only able to occur due to the prompt action of the town council in adopting the change in state law and subsequent agreement with the public employee committee and the underlying unions. Due to this change in insurance, the town has saved millions of dollars. In fact, over $14 million, in fact, over $14 million without any funding of OPEB was the figure in 2012. This year's figure includes funding OPEB at 1.6 million. So you can even see where that change occurred there. Although the GIC rates increased by 1.7% for the fiscal year, the group insurance budget is level funded. The movement to the GIC still continues to pay dividends, and our human resources department of Amy Fozziati and Karen Dusset continue to work with our employees to roll them in cost-effective plans for both the town and themselves. In fact, to date, in 2018, the town has avoided over $137,000 in premium fees by helping employees choose less costly plans. We also have an opt-out program that has achieved results, avoiding an estimated $425,000 in fees, in insurance fees of 2018. This has been a great job done by the town employees, and particularly our HR department. I think we have a really strong relationship with the, with the, with the employee union that negotiates this. One of our great success stories and really a savior in our budgets. The recommendation for the benefits and administration portion of Article 1 is 16,638,911.
Mr. Sherman.
The Finance Committee approves this line item of the budget and recommends favorable action.
Discussion? Mr. Mayo, what's your, what's your number under the motion number?
16.
16?
16, 638,911.
Okay, okay. Motion before you is to appropriate $16,638,911? 638,911. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Light Department?
That the town appropriate the sum of $22,370 in the light operation account to the non-contributory veterans' pension account, and to appropriate the sum of $852,773 in the light operation account to the contributory retirement pension accumulation fund account, and to appropriate the sum of $1,028,885 from the light operation account to the employees' group insurance account, and to appropriate the sum of $56,410 from the light operation account to the workers' compensation account, and that the balance of the receipts of the municipal gas and light department from July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2019, be appropriated for the use of the department for other expenditures, provided, however, that if the income from said department shall exceed the expenses of the department for said period of time, the use of the excess in whole or in part shall be determined by the Board of Light Commissioners.
Second.
Mr. Mayo.
The final portion of this article allows for the orderly transfer of funds from the different accounts within the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department to the town's pension, group insurance, workers' comp, and retirement accounts as the light department employees partake in these programs, and they are funded not from tax levy, but from the receipts of the light department.
Mr. Sherman.
Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this portion of the article.
Any discussion on the light department? Nope. All right, Mr. Mayo, the motion is, the figure set forward is Mr. Mayo to be then reconciled, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article 2. Pardon? Sean, oh, Sean. Sean Magierison, making a guest appearance. Come on down. Article 2, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money for capital outlay as follows, or to see what the town will do about it.
That the town vote to, I'm sorry, Sean Magierison, Chairman of the Capital Planning Committee, that the town vote to raise and appropriate from tax levy the amount of $1,997,644, and transfer the amount of $167,750 from the sewer receipts account to the sewer department capital outlay account, and the sum of $112,982 from the water receipts account to the water department capital outlay account, to, excuse me, to carry out the purpose of Article 2 as stated in the recommendation book.
Second? Thank you. Mr. Magierison.
Brief highlights from this year's capital requests are as follows. Requests from fleet items this year totaled $497,500. Highlights of the fleet items included this year are new fire prevention SUV. It's a 2002. The floor is rotted, steering column, has steering column issues as well. Traffic and fire alarm bucket truck. It's 18 years old, has rotten, also has transmission and front-end issues. The bucket will not pass inspection this year. The chipper for the DPW, it has safety issues, and is primary, is a primary piece of equipment for the forestry division. A rototiller, which is 48 years old, down much for the season last year, can't get parts anymore, and three new police cruisers, based on the replacement cycle. Facilities request this year totaled $446,500. Highlights of the approved requests are for the schools, we replaced two HVAC condensers at the high school cafeteria area, continue to replace Plexiglas windows at the high school and the yule, upgrade a bathroom to support younger students at the Doyle, excuse me, replaced a boiler controller called a Techman system, it's not working properly to replace boiler at the Greenwood School. Also, at the Civic Center, replaced the existing front doors to improve security and improve access, as well as replace some windows that are damaged and do not operate properly. At the library, we will retrofit existing, the existing door to provide handicapped access, and rebuild the front retaining wall, which is crumbling and is a safety hazard. Road request this year totaled $70,000. The request this year primarily includes cemetery roadway improvements and parking lot improvements. Under the category of fields, parks, and cemetery, request this year totaled $70,000. We will put money towards the creation of a cremation garden at the Forest Glade Cemetery. We'll fund the design of a new backstop with netting at the high school. And just a side note, we will need to have future construction funding for this. This is just for the design. Under miscellaneous, request this year totaled $75,000. We replaced the dishwasher at the high school, which is 20 years old. Replaced the oven at the Woodville, which is 16 years old, and replaced the stove at the Doyle Bay, which is 20 years old. The dollars spent on IT capital this year include purchasing what should be the last projectors for the schools for some time. Highlights for the water and sewer outlet this year include replacing the Farm Street odor control system. The current one is not operating correctly, as well as continuing the hydrant replacement program. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sherman.
Initially, the Finance Committee was concerned because last year, we spent about 2.2 million on capital, and we heard initial numbers of 2 million, said, wait a minute, why are we dropping it off? But as I said earlier at the beginning of this session, several hundred thousand dollars has been moved from the capital to the DPW. So a year-over-year comparison, apples to apples, if you will, this budget is really closer to 2.4 million if we'd include the stuff that went to DPW. So with that further explanation, the Finance Committee was in favor of this unanimously urges town meeting to vote in favor, but also, one of the things that we are concerned about is this budget needs to be moved up in the years in the future, and we hope to be able to increase substantially. But for tonight, we're good at the roughly $2 million for capital.
Any discussion under Article 2? Mr. Scott.
Good evening again. I'd like to point out that there are some people in the community feel that we should replace the high school, a building that's about 60 years old, and I just want to point out, there's about $200,000 going into fixing up the high school. They call that maintenance, so I hope people will take that into consideration. And also, down at the end here, there's for parks and netting and backstop design, $5,000. There's a group in Wakefield now organizing a committee to deal with the backstop. That is such a public safety problem there right now. The people on the task tennis courts, the foul balls are going up there. Sooner or later, you're going to have quite a problem. The balls going over the netting, going out in the street. And I went to the Capital Planning Committee, the Chon Yarun, right? And in November, we hope to have a package put together. I know Rick Stenson was talking about probably in the vicinity of $80,000. I know Rick Stinson was talking about probably in the vicinity of $80,000, Sean. Would you care to comment on that? Because we do have the committee pretty much in place and we have Tony Longo is going to be on it. We have the recreation director and we have the athletic director at the school, plus a lot of other people that do play tennis. I don't play any tennis right now. In fact, I was in the very mediocre, so I'm in the twilight of a very mediocre career. I told you that. So do you have any comments, Sean?
We're going to allow you to forecast something here, Sean, from Mr. Scott.
I do have a couple of comments relative to some articles that are, or some components that are for the high school. The logic is by the time we actually get the funding and actually are able to put the high school and you can't neglect the kids that are there currently. You have to strive forward, hoping for the best, let's put it that way. But you can't just not think about what's currently, what you currently need to change. So we don't want to be, think long-sighted versus just short-sighted as well. The high school courts. I do play tennis and my daughter's on the tennis team and my wife played tennis and my sister-in-law, a lot of people have used those courts. And this is, it's not a newer issue. Matter of fact, I think it's been in this situation that it is for about four decades, if I'm correct. And to my knowledge, this was only raised in the last year or two to the Capital Planning Committee. It has been thought about. I've talked to Brendan, Mr. Kent, about it as well last year. But the overall thought is to get the design correct. We don't know if it's going to cost 50, we don't know if it's going to cost 100. We'll get a design that works. Most likely, we'll have to bring the backstop in to get it correct and make more of a shroud.
We talked about that, right.
And, but until we actually know how much it is and get it, it's, you know, when you build a house, you want a design before you build the house. Same with this type of thing. You want to find out what you actually need before you actually sign it.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to bring it up to this body. This is the legislative branch of town government. I want to let people know we do have a big problem up there. There are solutions and it's not going to cost a lot of money. And we have a committee and we'll be back in November, probably.
Yep.
All right.
Sounds good.
And when we're all done, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, no, we're not done yet. We're not done yet. I'm in favor of that, but not yet. Let's finish this one up.
I'll stay right here then.
Oh, good, okay. Count on you. Hurry up, Lori.
Lori Hunt, one tariff.
Hey, don't feel any pressure.
No, no pressure at all. I have a question about, under facilities, it says galvan plumbing, sink faucet controls, and it says phase one. I'm curious what that is that needs to be done in such a new building and how many phases there are.
I'm going to let Rick speak to this one in particular.
Mr. Stinson.
The sinks in the galvan have a control mechanism and there's about, the gang sinks and they have, it's about 28 different controls there. And those controls end up failing. There is a pressure problem in the school, which we have not located. And it, we know it's not coming from outside. It's somewhere inside the school. And so we're trying to locate that, but we have not been able to. So we're looking to replace half of these controls in, with a new setup, hopefully, that will. And if that works, then we will replace the next half.
And is this the same problem that I think it was going on for at least a couple of years? My daughter's not in the galvan anymore, but there were some issues when she was there. And if that's the case, why are we not looking to the builder to correct this problem?
I believe the warranty has gone by on that. And it's still going on. The problem's never been resolved. We did a lot of work to try to find out where the pressure problems come from, but we have not been able to find that.
All right, thank you.
In the south?
Christine D. Felice, 33 Lawrence Street. Under the roads, you have cemetery roadway improvements for $40,000. Could you tell me what they're planning on doing down there? The roads down there are better than most of the roads in the town. I'm down there all the time, so I know.
The roads down there are very thin and we have not touched those roads in a long time. So this will repave the main roads in the cemetery. There are a number of areas that are starting to break apart and so this will correct that problem.
Okay, I don't agree that they're that bad. And what parking lots improvements are for $30,000?
We're looking at right now a number of different ones. We have a parking lot at Mapleway Playground. We have the back entrance to the high school. We won't be able to do both. We're looking at the parking lots at the Doyle School. So we'll pick one that is the worst when we get to pave.
Okay, I don't know if you can do that, this, with this money, but can we make a motion to take that cemetery roadway improvements out of the cemetery budget and put it to roadways within the town that many, many, many more people use than are down the cemetery? I don't know if you can do that procedurally.
You can, you have to write that down on a motion. So you have to write it down and give it to town council. So you want to take it out of the line item? Yeah, you can reduce the budget by that amount, sure. Well, again, again, it's recommendation. You can't, you can't direct, you can, you can reduce the budget amount, you can't direct where it goes. Well, you can hope. You can't direct line item budgets. You can't direct specific money to be paid for a specific purpose under, under a general budget appropriation.
Can I put that withdrawal to the DPW?
Sure. You can take it out of this one and send it over to them. No, 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 you can't. No, no, you can't. Not under this one. You got to, you got to, this is capital improvement. Yeah, we already got DPWs done. So this is a capital improvement. You want to, you want to reduce the budget or you want to reduce the budget by this amount because you don't want the cemetery roads fixed, correct? Okay. Is there, is there another capital provision in there for any other roads? Well, yeah. Yeah, okay. All right. Any, any further discussion under the capital outlay committee motion?
Did she, did she make that a motion?
Yeah, she made a motion to reduce...
And it hasn't, has it been seconded? Okay, I'll second it.
You'll second it, okay.
I'll second it because I agree with her. I go down to cemetery all the time. That's where I see all my buddies. But the roads aren't good. But they are terrible in town. So I really would suggest that, that money be transferred to go to the general public roads. And then I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
Hey, stop with that. We got, we got that part. We got that part, you know.
Sometimes you get forgetful, you know. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. Mr. Sherman.
Dan Sherman, 16 High Street, Chairman of the Finance Committee, but I'll speak for myself. The, the capital planning group did, I think, did an excellent job and they, they have over eight to nine million dollars that's presented to them every year for capital projects to get done. I just assumed that if we did anything at all, we'd increase it, but we also have to think about how much revenue we have. And so I don't really want to increase it at this point in time, but I certainly don't want to decrease it. I think it's the last thing we need to do. Article 15, the Finance Committee is going to recommend an increase in that because we recognize how much money we have and what we should do about our roads. So I would just assume, encourage everybody to vote down the amendment, keep the capital budget where it is and then pick this up in Article 15. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? We are again voting on the higher amount, okay? So the higher amount is the motion made by Mr. Majerison. I'll read those numbers to you in a minute. If you don't, if you want to reduce it by the 40,000 that Ms. D. Felice has proposed, then you vote no on the higher amount and then we go and vote on the lower amount. Okay? We got that? Any procedural questions? Mr. Lieber? You all right with this? Just checking. All right. Now, that the town votes to raise and appropriate from tax levy the amount of $1,977,640 and transfer the amount of $168,750 from the sewer receipts account to the sewer department capital outlay account and the sum of $112,982 from water receipts account to the water department capital outlay account to carry out the purposes of Article Two. Again, that's Mr. Majerison's motion. If you, if you approve that, you vote yes. If you want to vote, if you want to vote, wait and vote for Mrs. D. Felice's motion to reduce it by 40,000, you vote no. Got it? Any procedural questions? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. I will entertain a motion from Ann McGonigal Santos, a town councilor.
With a nod to Mr. Scott, I move that we adjourn tonight's meeting and that we reconvene on Monday, May 7th at 7:00 PM.
Is there any discussion? There being no discussion. All in favor? All opposed? We're not going to do Thursday. A couple of important big shots are out of town, so we can't do Thursday. But we're going to do Monday, come back. Plenty of good stuff on next Monday. Maybe some roadway talk, if you know what I'm saying. All right. We've got a lot of road stuff going on.